Did you go on? Okay, I'll call this regularly scheduled commission meeting to order at four P M. On Tuesday, the twentieth of May. Those present are the same that were present at the B O E meeting, Commissioner Hadeen, Commissioner Hadler. Let's see, Commissioner McCurdy is absent at this moment. Commissioner McGann is present, Commissioner Martinez, Commissioner McCandless, and myself, Commissioner Winfield with McCurdy now joining us. And so we'll all stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic which has had one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, we will start with our citizens to be heard at four o'clock. We'll start here in the chambers. Do I have anybody? If you'd raise your hand and then I'll call you forward. The young lady on beach at the back here, if you'll come up and identify yourself for us for those on.
Can I speak here?
Either one, either that you prefer.
Good evening. I guess good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Ariel Atkins, and I work in violence prevention here in our community. I'm speaking tonight in support of the county's plan to invest in a permanent home, the Children's Justice Center. Recently, I had the opportunity to pick up hygiene kits for survivors of domestic and sexual violence from an organization up north. I was so heartened by the community's investment in meeting the most basic and yet most meaningful needs of survivors. But what truly brought me to tears was when they handed me hygiene kits for children. Inside, among the expected items was clean underwear for children to wear after a sexual assault nurse exam. That moment stopped me because someone, somewhere, had the thought, had thought about that child's experience. In a level of detail that honored their dignity and humanity. That's what care looks like. That's what justice can feel like. And that's what our kids deserve. Our children deserve more than just the bare minimum. They deserve excellence, especially when they are at their most vulnerable. When a child has experienced harm, the environment where they tell their story matters. It should be calm, welcoming, and designed with their safety and healing in mind. That's not a luxury. It's a standard we should strive for. This investment is not just about response. It is about prevention. When we create spaces that are trauma-informed and child-centered, we strengthen trust and systems meant to protect kids. We send a clear message that their well-being is a priority and that our community is willing to do what it takes to keep them safe. As someone who works to empower survivors, I know the value of this kind of space is beyond measure. It changes the way a family experiences crisis. It opens the door to healing. A high-quality facility for the Children's Justice Center is an essential part of that promise. I urge you to vote in favor of this next step, not as an endpoint, but as a foundation for safer or just future the children of Grand County. Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Next, here in the chambers. Yes, please come forward. And you're welcome to sit at the table here or stand, folks, either one that you choose. It's fine.
Thank you. Public speech is not my forte, so I'll probably tremble. I have to hold my cap. All right, I'm going to speak fast. There's a lot to say. My name is Diego Velasquez. I'm the communications director over at Moab Museum. I'm here to speak to item eight, scheduling the commission budget workshop. We understand the current county budget shortfall, and my goal is to share the museum's role in Moab's tourism universe. Globally, the museum tourism market currently is valued at thirty-one point three billion and is set to grow to around ninety-three billion by twenty thirty-five, according to Future Market Insights. Across the country, local governments are investing heavily in museums in line with the transformation of these institutions from passive cultural sites into active drivers of tourism. In the last two weeks, about a third of folks who subscribe to travel guides in the Moab area via Discover Moab said that they were interested in education in museums. Our work has been continually featured in national and regional publications such as Conde Nast. We were awarded the Outstanding Achievement Award out of all of museums in the state of Utah this January by the Utah Sparkle Society. And the museum is currently one of the only indoor attractions in town. Moab Museum is a tourism boon to this town, and ninety-two percent of our visitation comes from first-time visitors, meaning that the far majority of folks that we invite in are visitors from outside the county. We've been awarded the Utah Office of Tourism pullout marketing grants and increasing amounts for the past three years to market the eyes of Nate Corridor, Colorado's West Slope and Front Range, and seek to expand into Vegas, Phoenix, Idaho, and New Mexico. Despite a reported fifteen percent decrease in T R T spending of late, the museum, with the launch of our uranium exhibition U ninety-two, has been up ninety-five percent in admissions for the past four and a half months straight. And though our ticket prices don't generate T R C C A or T R T funds directly, this is a tourism indicator to listen to for our town. At the Future Commission Budget Workshop, the museum urges the commission to consider the museum as a facility of tourism enhancement as codified in H B four five six. Our work is to present Moab as a welcoming location, building on pre-existing understandings of our area's history to visitors and to visitor-facing workers such as the guide industry. Historically, our funding has come from the mitigation budget of T R T through the county. But our work is much more. It's to encourage folks to explore our town with new information, new historical lenses to apply to their experiences, and the current uranium theme is the prime example of this. We've got big plans for the coming years, including the commemoration of America's semi-Quincy and Tenille in twenty twenty-six, and we aim to center the museum as a platform for this commemoration in the coming year. I ask the commission today to consider how Moab would like to share its stories and to make data-driven decisions to support arts and culture as a funding priority, a way that does not pit it against essential services from the mitigation budget three D. Instead, let's lift the tide of Moab so that we can support the needs and wants of visitors whose dollars we depend on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Chambers? Yes, please come forward. I see that we have a couple online with your hands up. I'll get to you when we get finished up here.
All right. Hi, everybody. I'm Charlene Bauer, and I just really wanted to say thank you. That's what I came up to say. I just got back from the Overland Expo that was in Flagstaff, Arizona, and had the opportunity to talk to quite a few of my peers in the off-road space, along with quite a few people that love to come to Moab and explored with them the conversations that you guys have been having here and the openness to events and people. And it is just, it's such a rotation of experience that they're having too. So very exciting times. I have a couple of companies that are wanting to come here, invest their money into here again, which is so cool. And so I'm going to host them and work with you guys on the schedule when they come. So I just really wanted to say thank you. I know that you guys are putting a lot of effort in, and it's not always rewarded, but the rewards are coming. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the chambers like to come up? Gentlemen in the back.
Hi, my apologies if I'm a little off-base here. Just learned about this recently, concerned about. Yeah, sorry. My name is Eric Creel. Sorry, anything else I need to share? No, I got. Just recently learned that many of the employees of the Trail Ambassador Program potentially immediately losing their jobs. I think that's a pretty bad move and possibly bad look. I understand that there's some legal issues with using the money that's been used to fund that program. Hope that we could find another way to continue to fund that program, at least to give these people two weeks' notice, not immediately terminate them, especially at a time when a lot of the other people, especially working for federal agencies in this town, are currently worried about losing their jobs, which is going to make, just going to like really hamper the labor market in this town, I think. Earlier in the year, I personally knew a lot of people who were in fear of losing their jobs, working for the Park Service, the Forest Service, the B L M, and was worried about them being able to find other jobs in this town. Same thing here, worried about those folks. So I just wanted to come and say that. That's really it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Sure, please come forward.
Hi, Dwight Johnston. You know, I was born and raised in this town a lot of years ago, and I've left this town several times in my life. Wyoming, two different times, went to Arizona for several years when the jobs ran out here. And that used to happen all the time in Moab. Most of the people that work in, you know, like the Trail Ambassador Program, there's a help wanted sign on every corner in this town. There's nobody that can't find a job in this town, especially that pays, may not be the job that they would like to go out there and have, but it's a job that'll make a living for them. And literally, I don't know of anybody that can find enough employees. So everything we keep hearing over and over about, I'm worried about this poor guy losing the job, or that poor guy losing the job. There are jobs here, and they are plenty. We don't need to misuse our tax money to make somebody a job. If it's, if it's something that's really valuable to the community, that's fine, do that. But let's not misspend the money to do it. Let's not get in trouble with the state again by misallocating the money. If you're going to, if you're going to fund that program, do it above board in the right way, not like they've done it in the past. So thanks, Dwight.
Thank you, Dwight. Do we have anybody else that would like to come forward? All right, I will start with Kaya on the line, if you'd like to. What's that? Carol. Karen, my apologies.
No worries. My name is Cara Bard, and I'm a rural resident of Grand County, living in Cisco, Utah. Utah was recently ranked the number one state to start a business in. However, my recent experiences with Grand County suggests the county is, in fact, not open for business. I faced three months and counting delays in getting permits approved. The planning and zoning department seeks to stall any and all advances I make. This Friday, May sixteenth, the building department canceled my building inspection the day of at eight fifty-five A M. after I had already traveled from Salt Lake City to Cisco for the explicit purpose of meeting with Bill Holes at two P M. Additionally, on Friday, the building department told me that I had to, quote, resend my documents, end quote, of the site plan and building plan via email for review, though they had already been provided alongside my building permit application and reviewed by Bill. In order to, quote, get back into the queue, end quote, I had to resend these documents. Isn't completing a building permit application, wouldn't that enter me into the queue as is? It appears the building department is following a clandestine process for processing building permit applications, one that does not follow established procedure. Grand County's rural residents, myself included, are continuing to be let down by the county's lack of staffing, and conflicting stories are swirling regarding if these jobs within the building department are being axed in order to bring in a full-time consulting company. We're left with more questions than answers, and all the while, the clock continues to tick with no concrete solutions being offered. The county has failed to satisfy its duties and obligations. Commission, I cannot wait any longer. Could you please let me know when I can expect my building permit, or my building inspection to take place, when I will receive an answer on my right-of-way encroachment permit application, as well as my county business permit application? These applications were submitted April sixteenth, March third, and February twenty-fifth, respectively. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, and my apologies. It's a pretty small print showing your name on there. So again, thank you. And the next one, I believe, is Miss Campbell.
Hey there. I'm calling for a different purpose, but I'll say we're in the middle of building as well, and we had a three-day delay when we had to resend an email because we wrote it in Blitzform instead of paragraph form. So Cara, I feel your pain. It's been been hard. I'm calling because I spent some time this morning watching all of the discussion and debate related to H B. What is it? H B. I'll find the one in a second. The state law that was passed this last legislative session in order to update the definitions for T R T. I wanted to know, like, what was actually the intent there? What was behind it? I hope you all have watched all of this as well and read the transcripts, but I wanted to point out a couple of things in case you haven't. The first is that the state legislature went through the effort to actually provide definitions for mitigation and promotion in our code that didn't use to exist. And included in the list of what is supported by establishing and promoting tourism now includes things that help to market in order to attract or enhance the transient guest spending. So I think that's really interesting. Also, if you read through the red lines of the code, you'll notice that in addition to the standard facilities that you would expect them to have, things like convention centers, they've added trails as the facilities that the legislature now say can benefit from promotional spending, not mitigative spending, in order to support their operations and their maintenance. So those are some interesting data points. I know that you're going to be looking into this. I truly hope that you'll go through and actually watch the discussion in two different committees, both of which passed it through unanimously. There was some debate when it hit the Senate floor, where it also passed unanimously, and then it passed sixty-one to ten out of the House with no discussion. And there's one thing I wanted to read into the record. The representative for the Utah tourism industry actually stood up and made a statement at the first committee, and he was speaking in favor of H B four fifty-six. That's what it was. And this is what he said. This is a quote that I pulled directly out of the transcript. Understanding what it takes to establish or enhance a tourism product in your county takes some work. It isn't just about marketing and promotion. It's about setting up community venues or improving community venues, or helping visitors once they're in your county to use wayfinding and directional signs and help get people to the right areas of the county that are appropriate for them to be recreating in instead of going off on their own. It's things like wayfinding, it's beautification in rural downtown communities, making it more attractive for somebody to pull off the road and stay and grab lunch, or go to a museum, or go to shops. It's some of the murals that have been enhanced and drawn and painted in communities to beautify some alleyways. It's about outdoor adventure maps. It's about some adventure training, or ambassador training, he said. But it's also about, as we all know, dark skies, destination tourism has become something that is really unique to Utah with so many of our dark sky areas, and that takes some work to help orchestrate. Where do you want people to go to view your dark sky, both safely navigating through roads, as well as where they're going to park and not go out and cause a problem? So in the tourism industry's mind, it's part of the establishing part of establish and promote, not the promotion side, that they're looking at utilizing the destination development. So this was in response to a comment that the state auditor made saying, hey, we need to be really specific about how we define promotion and mitigation. And here's the person who's representing the tourism industry, all of the businesses whose clientele's are going to have to deal with that extra T R T tax if it ended up being passed, which it did, saying, we support this, and specifically, we support enhancing the visitor experience as part of what fits into that promotion category. And there was no discussion.
Emily, if you can wrap us up here, we appreciate it. We're well over.
Sorry, don't have a timer remotely. Anyway, I just wanted to read that into the record. I think that you all would benefit from going through and visiting the intent and hearing the industry representative speak some of his intent as well. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. And let's see, did we have, I see another one online. Are you here for the citizens to be heard? Mr. Wells?
I am. Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we hear you fine.
Well, my name is Curtis Wells. I'm a Grand County citizen. I'm currently the governor's appointed chairman of the Community Impact Fund Board, that we receive the state's portion of oil, gas, coal revenue generated off of federal lands. And as some of you know, we distribute that back to the impacted counties and cities for public infrastructure. And I could list about, you know, the last thirty projects in Grand County and the city that were almost exclusively funded by C I B. And I would encourage the commission members, if you're not familiar with those, please do, because I think it impacts your perspective, or it should on this. You know, I'm speaking today, and I want to comment on the letter regarding the Doji cuts and the letter proposed today regarding the sale of public lands. And I know this is a tough, you know, issue for some, but I'm, you know, happy to speak on it. You know, I want to, you know, this is going to sound brash, but you know, the the letter that was approved last week at the last meeting was a big disappointment to me in particular, because these cuts and reining in bureaucracy and, you know, excessive grants and funds to NGOs and institutions that are affiliated and really incestuous with the federal agencies, I think, have been a detriment to Moab for decades. You know, and I would just point at, you know, any of the representatives either sitting there currently at the city, you know, in local government in the past, you know, twenty years. And I think you can really pin down, there's a disconnect, you know, from folks that arrive in the community through the bureaucracy, you know, or Park Service, Forest Service, B L M, with the kind of impacts that they have when making decisions for local government. Our infrastructure is still a mess. The housing circumstance has gotten significantly worse in the last eight years, largely due to the policies overseen by, you know, the commission in the last eight years. And, you know, we, it's a tough thing to, you know, to address, because I don't wish any ill will, and I don't have any issue personally with any, you know, representative that landed in Moab working for the federal government or an NGO. But I want to judge you on the success of governing the local community. And I want, and I want to, you know, kind of call attention to, you know, just the complete absence of good governance of both the city and county as a result of these ideologies. And so for every federal worker or every Vista intern that is impacted by these cuts, there's twenty X, fifty X, hundred X, community members, employees, business owners, single mothers, single fathers that have really, really suffered at the hands of the policy decisions. Public lands and those lands are amazing. They are an asset, but you need to separate that from the federal government. And I would point you towards Raptor State Park. Look at how great that's come together at such a quick timeframe. Have you ever seen any of the Park Service or the Federal Government act on that timeline without getting drugged down in Washington? Have you, have you ever seen federal parks, federal lands manage as efficiently as state lands? You have. So we point towards SITLA as the model. It's a fear monger tactic. You know, everything's going to be sold off and privatized. We all know that's not real. Now, on to the letter that's on the dais today. I find it really disappointing that this was a bipartisan proposal, because by the county's own admission, the affordable housing issue is due to the lack of private land. So creative solutions with the federal government to get some of these lands that aren't high-use recreation and aren't, you know, aren't in our recreation, kind of in our conservation portfolio to better use is a really great proposal, and I would hope that you all would get behind that. And that's all I have to say. I wish I had more time, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate it. Do I have anybody else here in the chamber that would like to come forward, speak, citizen to be heard? Please come forward, identify yourself, and.
My name is Cara. Sorry, I think I know most of you. I was just coming today for two reasons. I caught some things on social media that had me extremely concerned about the two different topics, but they are related. One is that the tribal council has recently started to officially advertise Mill Creek, which there, in the nineteen nineties, I was a part of a Mill Creek partnership. And in twenty twenty, twenty nineteen into twenty twenty, there was another group that went through a very lengthy community-based process to come up with recommendations to the city, the county, B L M, et cetera. And those, in large degree, have been honored over the years. There's some things that have not yet been taken care of that I think need to be addressed, but I was really sad to just see some of Mill Creek itself being pushed on massive media instead of just through the informal channels that's happened. That area, the trailhead's not ready for it, the residential neighborhood it goes through is not ready for it. It just, it's a bad idea. So I just wanted to, it's kind of the cat's out of the bag, but why did the citizens twice in twenty-five years, thirty years, go through such lengthy processes to create recommendations to merely have them ignored? And that leads me to talking about the Trail Ambassador Program, which I think is something I'm seeing kind of pop up in different ways, as if it's somehow a bad thing. It's had state and national recognition as a positive thing, and I do realize that there's been a lot of uncertainty as to how it should be funded and whether or not it can be funded through T R T funds. With H B four fifty-six, I believe I have that number right, in the last legislative session, it seems to me, I haven't had time to read it in depth, but it seems to me that requires evaluation before assuming that it can't be funded through that. Because when I look at the mitigation language, when I look at things saying, saying something that, sorry, my notes are, it was a long workday. I'm a little disorganized. But basically, it reinforces the visitor experience. It makes people want to come back, and it also keeps human poop out of our canyons. Because for those of you who weren't here in the nineties and the eighties, they almost shut down the Colorado River camping because of human poop. That's not an exaggeration. That's why the B L M built the campgrounds that they did. And I would hate to see that happen when that's our water supply into town, or in Grand Staff Canyon, or in all the other places where we get these trailheads full of hundreds of people. They need a little help. They don't understand how to visit in a way that leaves no trace. And having that, and in this day and age, I love that there is an actual human interaction at a trailhead. I think that means so much more than any other kind of advertising you could do, and it leaves people with a much better taste in their mouths on all levels. So I just wanted to put that out there, and I appreciate everybody's time today. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anybody else that would like to come up? It doesn't be heard at four. It will be held again at six o'clock. If you feel like you want to wait around until then. Do we have anybody else? Nobody else online? All right, we will move forward on our agenda then. And I believe we're going to have a presentation here from the Attorney General's Office regarding the Children's Justice Center grant.
And Chair Winfield, if I may?
Yes, you may, please.
So we are joined today by Heather Stewart from the Attorney General's Office. We're really grateful to have her here to give us some information and a different look at the C J C. She's the deputy director of the C J C program. She provides substantial support and training and assistance. She helped put on the C J C symposium this year that the county and the C J C sent a number of individuals. We really appreciate her coming down and giving on this presentation. So I just wanted to introduce her, and I'll turn the time over to her.
Thank you. Welcome, Heather.
Thank you so much. Thanks for having me. I would have been down there in person today, but I had to be in Juab for a groundbreaking today. So thank you for letting me join you virtually, at least. I wrote my comments just for the sake of time, but I'm happy to entertain questions, too, if you have those. On behalf of the Utah C J C program and our director, Tracy Tabit, thank you for allowing me time for a few comments. As a state-county partnership, the C J C proves what can be done when we all work together on a common cause as important as protecting children. We know that this project requires a significant investment on your part and for us as well. When Grand County agreed to have a C J C more than twenty-five years ago, it was added to the C J C's governing statute. The model has evolved significantly since then, and the current space is simply inadequate for the services we need to provide to child abuse victims, services that they deserve and need in order to heal. Thanks to one-time funding from the legislature, we have this timely and unique opportunity to give the C J C a permanent location owned by the county to replace the existing space. We are helping more with the purchase of this home because of the true need and because your real estate market is so tough, and we fear that it won't get better. Your C J C desperately needs improved space to give C J C clients more privacy, especially during forensic medical exams, and so that your C J C has its forever home to allow for growth in our service population, the potential expansion of services, and to ensure more collaboration among the multidisciplinary team. Our national membership organization, which is called the National Children's Alliance, recognizes the importance of the facility and highlights the following. The C J C has to be a designated facility. The CJC has to be a designated facility. It must be maintained in a manner that is psychologically and physically safe for children, teens and families. It must be convenient and accessible to both clients and multidisciplinary team members. It should allow for observation of client staff and MDT members at all times. It has to be appropriate for the delivery of service and ensure the separation of victims and alleged adult offenders. Unfortunately, your current CJC provides some challenges in meeting these important recommendations. We wanna support your CJC's ability to meet all needs for decades to come. We are investing in your future. This will be a county-owned facility to be proud of. And the state looks forward to years of continuing supports to of continuing to support the work of the CJC. Through its longstanding contract with Grand County. That said, to protect the investment in the CJC, this arrangement includes a return of the state's funding. Should the county seek to repurpose the building, sell it or otherwise discontinue use as a CJC in the future. Before I wrap up, I just wanted to take a few minutes if I could, just to address some issues or concerns that have already been raised. Directly to me and to the CJC Director. The first thing that I wanted to speak to really is the multipurpose use of the space. Our contract with the CJC states that. The CJC has to obtain prior written approval of from the administration. Um of our program at the CJC at the state level for any service offered by or through a CJC. Other than those specifically designated in the contract in order to maintain the core functions of the state program. Which is the facilitation and coordination of the investigation and prosecution of child abuse. And other cases where the child is a primary victim and that the CJC is a neutral, child-friendly facility. So uses that the program will consider and that have already been discussed with the Director and the County Attorney. Would be converting the garage to training and meeting space relevant for government and community partners. Already connected to the CJC. Uses that we cannot consider include, but are not limited to. Uses that do not align with our national standards of care that I just reviewed briefly. Uses that increase unrelated foot traffic at the CJC. Uses that require non-CJC employees to access the CJC building, particularly during work hours. And uses that could jeopardize the privacy and security of the CJC property and the clients. The last piece that I really wanna speak to is the space itself and whether the size is appropriate for your community. The policy since CJC's were established by the legislature in nineteen ninety one has been that the community had to provide the facility. And most centers have built or purchased exclusively with county and private funds. In Moab's case, the space has been on lease from the state. But as previously mentioned, it is woefully inadequate for the range of services and support we provide to children, families and our partners. The proposed building is comparable in size to those in similar communities with similar caseloads. Only Sam Pete is in a smaller space and Sam Pete County completely donated a building for the CJC. From the one-time funds, Sam Pete only asked that the state cover soundproofing and recording equipment. Kane was funded exclusively from non-state dollars and it was before we had state funding one time for this purpose. Virtually every other center has had to relocate to a new building due to growth, the need for services and the expansion of services. Grand is one of the last remaining in its original space. As noted earlier, the housing market in Moab presents challenges. We wish this opportunity had been available much sooner in the center's twenty-six year existence. But this is the first and only time the legislature has appropriated funding that could be used in this way. The layout of this home is well suited for a CJC, supports all the necessary services. Meets our safety standards, will need minimal adjustments. And will be able to comfortably accommodate families for decades to come. I know that rural counties too are often under-resourced and sometimes overlooked and I really wanted you to understand that proportionately speaking. The CJC Program is investing more in this project because we are very committed. To making sure that children in the farmost corners of the state have access to services. When the county asked if we could increase our contribution, we figured out a way to make that happen. With the support of other CJC's around the state. And in closing, I really just wanna encourage you all to see the CJC as we do. As a place of hope where anything is possible. I recall one young girl who disclosed abuse to her parents and said, I'm broken and I can't be fixed. But the CJC was where she began to let go of the heavy burden she'd been carrying. Where she learned that what happened to her did not define her. The CJC is where healing begins. And together, we can give more children, teens and families in Grand in Grand County improved space. That physical and psychological safety to begin their healing journey. Please help us get this to the finish line for the sake of the children, teens, families and child abuse professionals in your community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and we can go to questions, Mary, please.
A a couple, I have two questions. So what I from I what I understand from your uh presentation. Is that the garage that is not, you know, is not attached to the home. Can be used for other types of uses such as training. And what type of training did you say that it could be used for?
Training and meeting space with the MDT partners, the community members, the community partners that already have a relationship that are relevant to the CJC.
So it would, it would be limited to just training for uh or is that something that would be kind of worked out? Uh later. I mean, would there be training, other types of trainings that would be available, maybe not directly related to the CJC? But would uh enhance the well-being of the community and children and such such as. I don't know, first aid training or um training, you know. You know, I just came up with this, it's not coming to the top of my head, but. Could we enhance that to beyond uh just training for. Uh things that are directly related to the uh Children's Justice Center.
Heather, the County Attorney has his arm hand raised, I'm gonna let him answer that first.
Perfect.
Just Commissioners, just so you're aware, right now we have uh MDT, which is the Multidisciplinary Team. That team meets on a monthly basis and includes professionals from the community, including the bottom of Police Department, of course Andrea, the Director, myself. Um DCFAS, the Attorney General's Office that represents DCFAS, the Guardian Light, I'm in a mix of other professionals in the community. It's about twenty individuals, twenty to twenty-five individuals and they meet on a monthly basis. Those individuals would already be cleared, it's a very normal thing that's connected to the CJC. And so that's a a meeting that we anticipate. It's it's where we review and and talk about cases.
But I guess what I'm asking is, is it?
You you Commissioner, you haven't been to those meetings, those are the private meetings that we use for to review the child abuse cases, that's different.
Okay, yeah, okay, I I see what you're saying, so you have the, okay. Okay, excuse me, I I was confused, uh but. But would you have the other ones there as well? That are connected to the CJC just besides just that one?
So Mr. What she's referring to, we have of course the MDT teams and then we have the CJC Advisory Board. And and I think that would probably be a an okay one, I don't know if the friends of the CJC could meet there, but maybe the. I think the Advisory Board, I I think that would be more uh more closely aligned, but I defer to Ms. Stewart.
Again, I think I think those meetings and that kind of collaboration, that's already a part of what the regular business is of the CJC. Or any of those partners that need to come together. Um and again, we we have to give prior written approval, so I can't really necessarily go through every. Scenario at this point, but certainly we would collaborate with the county, the county attorney and certainly the CJC Director. And 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 consider all of their recommendations as we move forward with this.
And the other thing that you said during your presentation, this is my last question. Is you said there's a potential of enhancement of services. What, what, what did you mean by that? What what type of enhancement of services would are you thinking of increasing?
So I don't know that I have anything specific top of mind, I ju- we just want to allow for growth. I I've been in this field for thirty years and the way that we did business thirty years ago looks a lot different than how we handle cases. And support children currently. And so our our field is very victim-centered, very trauma-informed and it is based on research and best practices. So all that is to say, if something new comes to our community that says, hey. This is a new service that we should be providing for children, we just want the ability to do that. I can give you one example, when we first started doing business years ago in our state here. We we didn't do a trauma screener with each child. Um and make a more informed decision about mental health therapy or referrals for those children. That's something we do as a daily practice now, so those things could just evolve over time as our field tells us. There might be new research-based ways or evidence-based ways to process these cases or serve children.
Do we have any other questions? Trish, everybody good? All right Heather, we really appreciate your time and the presentation, we're excited to um. Get get past this and move on and get a place for these children, so we we really appreciate your time and coming.
It's really my pleasure, thank you so much.
Yep, thank you. And let's see, we are going to move on, we are have moved the. Presentation for the Grand County Active Transportation and Trails to a future date and so we will come. I don't believe we have any agency reports. We'll start with the general report, we'll see Commissioners, does we have any member disclosures to make? Mr. McCurdy, Commissioner McCurdy.
Wife works for the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, anyone else?
That works for uh.
Okay, very good, anybody? Okay, it looks like we're good there, I will start. Um Trish, would you like to start us off with our Commission Report? Future consideration.
Yep, um I met on May seventh with Brian Murdock and Michael Inglehart Inglehart from the US Forest Service. Just to kind of basically introduce myself and get to know you and I didn't send out, but did, I mean, I didn't send that, I do that. Like an email to the three of us saying, how often should we meet, so and did you get that? But I'll send it again, because I got no response, so anyways. I'm just so we can get rolling. Um I had a library board meeting, just general housekeeping on the eighth, on the twelfth, I had a fair board meeting and they're just cooking along. Um meeting at least once a week, which is great. On the thirteenth, I had a meeting of the Conservation District and I did attach for you guys a map. Um that came from that meeting and I'll I'll get to that in a second, but they set a tentative budget. Um the four H is still looking for a coordinator. There is been some um salmonella in chickens, so it's just very important to wash your hands. Once you're working with your chickens or gathering their eggs. Um Russian knappweed and jointed goat grass is basically out of control specifically in in right of ways. So we just need to really be really cognizant of that. Um there is a reorganization of NRCS, so some instability with NRCS. And that's the map that Grand County, um you'll notice in that map is basically, and this is of May sixth. Is considered D two, which is in severe drought. That being said, what that means is for producers, they can apply for some help, for example in hauling water and livestock feeding. That same day, I went to the Cemetery Board Meeting, they are prepping for Memorial Day. Um they had five burials in April and five in May and again, and I've mentioned this prior, some young people, which is is disturbing. Um on the sixteenth, actually out in Castle Valley, I met Representative Monson, came out to Castle Valley and met with a bunch of citizens there. And it was a great, it was a really great gathering, he did a great job um and and it was really nice to meet him, he had, he had. Kind of reached out to Commissioners when he was running, um and so I had zoomed with him but never met him in person, so that was very nice, that's it.
Very good, Commissioner Heather. Um Trauma's Meeting on the twelfth, uh discussed the letter which is in our packet regarding. Uh the request of UDOT uh that had unanimous support from the Trauma's Committee. Um we discussed uh some of the new trails that are on the burner, including a balcony climbing trail that. Well, uh will be scheduled to be built this winter, uh roughly December, February. Um also the bar and expansion that was approved, your trail mix that will should. Uh the building of that should be a year after the balcony one, so um. Into twenty-six, be twenty-seven and then uh also lots of maintenance has been done recently in the horse keep trails area. Uh they've cleaned a lot of the um the those trails up first time in a few years and they, as well as um they've designated some. Or they they've created some suggestions as to directional travel on those trails, this should help with the flow. Um Spring Spruce Set up, uh bit of a recap there, it was the best ever turnout for the third year. A great volunteer event uh and um it was great success, lots of projects completed. Happy volunteers and uh projects. Uh also, there's a discussion about the need for um progressive jump line trails in Moab. As we don't have any of those for for like mountain bikes and not dirt jumper VMX style bikes. And uh there's there's some preliminary discussion as to where those trails uh might best be situated if um if if anywhere. Uh the dirt jumps as they are at Anonymous Park, that they don't have enough elevation to to create kind of uh speeds needed for. For big progressive uh jump trails. And uh report from the mountains, mountains are are super dry, um it's the earliest ever opening for the Warner. Uh Lake Campground and that road, Hazard County opened the earliest time. So that trail is open, although they did get a little bit preset the other day, I was up there yesterday, it's sticky. And um it was also open and as of that Trail Mix Meeting last week, uh they said guys are passionate. Today. TSSD Meeting the next day, um Bill actually also attended that meeting and he stayed a little bit later than I do. So if he has anything else to add to that, I'd welcome that. Um there is discussion about the, uh if you guys remember, they received a CIB grant for a state and metering system. That's been mostly installed, waiting on a few small components there, but um. They have been collecting data with that since April. And uh once they get everything online, then it'll be much easier for uh Thompson to. See how much uh water they're actually using. So that's, that's really cool for that community and a great use of CIB. Um there's also a discussion about um. TSSD has been meeting with Gwissa also for preliminary discussions about. Um TSSD potentially partnering with or being absorbed by Gwissa. Uh there's discussions about um what kind of appetite the board has for being absorbed and what it might look like. Um the board, uh it sounded like there was appetite for that, but the board would um. Want to have a seat at the table with Gwissa, so maybe a sub-board or a or a representative or more from Gwissa to TSSD would be. Uh important if that were to uh come to fruition. Let's see, the historical preservation committee meeting was canceled on that day and. Uh we hope to reschedule that soon in the next couple of weeks. Um on the sixteenth last Friday, I attended the non-motorized master plan kickoff meeting with the contractors who were approved. That's Alta, uh they had two members come down, they met with the um Advisory Committee there. And we talked about uh schedule and deliverables and it's um hopes that the. That they would have a lot of presentation for this body and the City Council in October. Um some of the things that were discussed were uh potential roadblocks, community outreach and a few other things. We also had a uh walk and bike audit after that meeting, which was great, so we rode around town. And and a few people walked uh around town with the contractors, uh representatives from the county and the city. And we looked at various um problem areas in town uh that have been identified and um. As well as its potential areas that could be really useful for improving our active transportation and our safe routes to school, those kind of things. So it was really nice to be able to actually show them uh. Boots on the ground, eyes, uh areas that that uh we need to look at. that uh we need to look at. Um and then just yesterday, uh we had a legislative committee meeting along with uh Melody and Bill with Cody. Uh wasn't a whole lot there. Um uh we discussed the interobsession that's going on this week. It didn't sound like there was much that concerned Grand County. And we also uh discussed uh the governor's housing czar, Steve Waldrup. Uh should be coming. The date was changed, but it sounds like he'll be able to arrive the week of the tenth of June at some point, but we don't have a date nailed down. Also, um it's good news. Uh bills have been introduced in the in the House and Senate nationally by Representative Kennedy and Senator Curtis uh to for for the umtr conveyance to the county. So that's cool. They are standalone bills at this point. And hopefully they'll see some movement the next year. Um but that is definitely in benefit to our county. And uh that's that's it's great that our our uh national delegation is um rocking about that. That's all I have on that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm Mr. McCurdy.
Um I'm gonna let you guys handle the updates. Uh I've been to meetings with seven, even to the fact of today. Um we were uh just at the OSA River River Cutting for your facility. Uh that was great. Well presented too. Uh the reason I'm in this shirt and this hat, previously, a previous commission meeting, uh Trish stated that uh some of our uh some of our uh personal friends and uh community members, uh Perry out scrounge. There was a lunch and held the day, uh a benefit lunch and held the day and attended that. It was a lost pop stop and proceeds went to help Perry out family rebuild their house that uh burned down. Um it it was good to actually hear an expanse on that, that there were, there's also been other events that others have gone to and participated. I really like I really like hearing that. Um last but not least, there was one more. Oh, uh most of my uh meetings for this month haven't happened. But uh following some of our discussions today, uh budget workshops, et cetera, a lot of things are in motion there. So I will definitely be reporting back to Recreation Special Service District, OSTA and Transportation Special Service District going forward and after these, after our budget talks, so.
Commissioner McAdams.
Thank you. Uh I was one of the only meeting I had scheduled during this time was almost four days. Right after I had gotten on, I don't recall from Cody saying that he needed some answers quickly to help fill out some information about the conveyance for the project. So I bowed out and then I got back on and they had a presentation on the dashboard from the housing dashboard. It was very good and I would like that it's a future uh consideration to have them come and give a presentation on the dashboard, what it what it provides, how it works, so that we can direct people there that might need it and then be awesome. But we may want it for our research or for our research. Um so that is uh my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Commissioner Martinez.
Thanks, Bill. So let's see here, on the seventh, I was with Trish there. And I think Bill was there for a little while for the Dolores Travel Management Meeting. And uh we ended up completing the review of trails um that we were gonna including in the alternatives. And then we set our first field trip up from today twenty eighth. So I'm excited about that. Um also on the seventh, I had a uh GCAT budget meeting and we discussed determining the amount of TRT that's inside the GCAT reserve account and why the twenty five uh five in the nutshell transfer from fund twenty three to twenty seven trail baskets. On the eighth, we had an audit committee meeting and we reviewed the three applications for the internal offer. Um then I also had a motorized trail committee and uh we went over a letter to the BLM on uh recommendations for improving the cliffhanger trails. Um there's some, there's some spots there where motorcycles actually aren't able to make it back up that that first drop right there. And so there's a little piece of trail right there that they're they're looking to have built. Um on the twelfth, I had an Arches SSD meeting. Um we elected board positions and uh discussed some concerns with the city before uh proposing services um to Arches without talking to the SSD. On thirteenth, I was um at the TRT workshop. And and that and that was pretty good. We went over and kind of explained some of the nuances with the HP forty six. Uh four fifty six, sorry. And you know, one of the a couple of things that I noticed are out of there is, you know, right now we are drawing from our reserves in a time when revenue is dropping, right? And there was a lot of good discussion on the outdoor uh outdoor recreation mitigation grant um that that will be coming available next year. And then there were questions raised on if Grand County was compliant with TRT. Um following that, we had an NTAB meeting, uh Moab Travel Advisory Board. And there were discussions on conflicts of interest over a filming project that was taking place. Um we had an introduction to Madden and discussed most the most efficient ways that the board and the new uh contractor will be able to work together. Um and then we discussed uh creative agents that are um that are available to help with some video creation. So went through some of those. Um on the fourteenth, I went to the chamber and there was some, a lot of talk about the about Christmas and uh building up the uh the light parade this year. What's that? So you know, that's that's how they do it. I know. Um and then also on the fourteenth, I joined uh Trish and Bill um at the MOP. And uh I I caught it a little bit late, but heard some of Castle Valley issues as pertaining to the water up there. And then also uh heard a presentation on dry wells, um which are just a really new, it's a side idea that we might be able to mitigate flooding as well as recharge the groundwater. So gotta hear a little bit about that. Um and then on the fifteenth, I went to the Gwissa meeting. Um I know that there's a lot of talk of, you know, you know, how bad he um he are sitting in the drought, but sitting right now, Ken's Lake is near fifteen uh year average. So at least right now for Ken's Lake, things have been good. Um however, on June eleventh, Gwissa is planning a conservation meeting. And uh there'll be a flyer posted for that. I'll see how I can blast that out to all of you guys. It's open to all the community members that want to join. Um and then there's also with some questions on a grant and thank you, Trish, for answering that uh about a groundwater study from USU that that had been commissioned from the uh or had been authorized or budgeted from the commission. I just want to make sure that we connect the dots for Gwissa. That's all I got.
All right, Commissioner McAdams.
Okay, well, uh Wednesday, the seventh, we had an additional economic opportunity advisory board meeting so that we could discuss applicants for their RCG and RCOG grants. So we're moving closer to decision to forward to the commission, which they'll make next week at the meeting in May, um May twenty eighth. I also was on some interview committees or interview for the airport director. So that's exciting. Hopefully we'll have someone placed there soon. Tuesday, the thirteenth was the first EMS sustainable workshop. Um Bill and I were there on behalf of the commission and the EMS liaison. And we have two more planned for next month and I imagine we'll be doing those for a while to figure out. Like EMS sustainable. Then I attended a joint workshop with the MTAB and the commission. Then Thursday, the fourteenth, um I took a ride with the chair of the local council on aging. Her name's Karen Berry. We went to Green River for the regional council on aging meeting. Um she just had my ear on why we need a um facility for the aging. So that was that was interesting. Um Friday, I attended the USAC meeting on opioid settlement uses. I think that's interesting. I it seems like there's some attack on the way that opiate, one supplement has been used. I think our county is doing a really good job. I don't see that we're buying trinkets and trash with with that money. So it's going to good, good places. Um yesterday, we had a legislative subcommittee and have anything super concerning on the attendance for the interim, but we'll meet again in August. And then I just went to the OSTA, driven cutting for Powder River rodeo equipment. Looks fantastic. And I also attended the EMS Special Service District meeting today. And the treasurer's report reported that without the county funds, they would have had only twenty thousand dollars in their account. Um they also gave out awards for EMS week. There was a incident after Thanksgiving in twenty twenty four where EMS R and the classic were able to save the life of a base jumper is lives here in town. And so he was there. They presented that award. Um and they also working with the healthcare foundation at prehospital, do prehospital blood administration grants. So that's exciting. So we'll be able to carry blood on ambulances if that goes through. And that's all.
Very good. Thank you. And I had a few of them. Um one of them was I attended the county leadership meeting. And the important part that came out of that for me was when our IT director mentioned that we are failing at about thirty percent of us on phishing emails. Um I will say that the first one I passed and forwarded on to him and the second one I failed. Learned asked me a personal question. And so I'm fifty fifty at this point on Matt's um sending out fake phishing emails trying to educate us and bring us up. So there there's pretty high value right there that I think we need to be aware of. And then I also attended the audit committee that has been reported on. I won't go into length on that one. I did attend the TSSD with Jacques and nothing of real substance happened after you left. It was um just kind of winding down. I also attended the EMF sustainability meetings with that Andy put on and Commissioner McAdams was there as well. And that got fairly deep into their financials. And I think that we're gonna continue digging into that, trying to come up with some solutions for EMS. I attended the joint workshop with the Moab Office of Tourism. We did have some commissioners missing for that joint workshop. But it definitely brought a lot of the financial issues to light for us. I was also part of the MOP meeting that Brian and Trish attended there. And I too was very interested in the dry wells.
Dry wells.
Dry wells. I want to call them a wet well, but a dry well. And then also there was some discussion around the need for some flooding retention basins out in the valley at that meeting. And then I also attended the Colorado River Gap monthly update. And that is the trail that will extend along the highway to Grand Staff Canyon. And that's moving along quite well. It will have no suspended bridge. It will all be with retaining walls and um built out over the green walls. Was the major update that I got out of that one. Um I also was part of the legislative update that several have definitely filled us in on and did a good job. And then today I was part of the Eastern Region Regional Council, excuse me, that was yesterday meeting there. And that was on some of the different grants that are coming available. And it looks like the BLM is gonna put in for some of those grants to make the Horse Thief Campground and the Goose Island Campgrounds fully accessible for people in wheelchairs and other things. I believe the Horse Thief will have a limited campgrounds. The Moose Island, they said they could do a hundred percent of the campsites to be ADA compliant. And then they also mentioned about doing some upgrades to the some of the ramps and the bathrooms at those um launch sites along the Colorado River. And then the last thing I'd just like to um thank the city for what I considered was a success with the C ten show. Um it was mostly all trucks. There was quite an arrangement there. And I was surprised at how many of them came to town here. And I spoke with many of them as well as the show organ organizer. And and it was pretty incredible, the numbers that he showed. And then they, I don't want to give away, the sheriff might be announcing, but they did donate to the search and rescue team. And I'll let him update on that part of it. But I I did think it was a well-mannered, well-presented, nice show that was put on there. So and that's the end of my report. We can move on to electeds. I will um let Stephen start us off online.
Big question for you, Bill. Can I ask you a question?
Oh, sure.
And this is a really simple question. I probably already know it, but I would assume TSSD doesn't have a tiered rate system. Is that correct?
I honestly couldn't answer.
I know. And I would, I've kind of assumed since they're not metered, but now that they
They charge a flat rate, right, E or U? And then and then if they go above a certain amount, then they charge like
But how do they know if they're out metered?
They are metered. It's just they they're using fashion meters.
Okay, gotcha.
So what they're 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 uh putting in skater meters that are connected to the internet so that you can be read at any time online.
Okay, yeah. I was just, I wasn't sure. I couldn't remember if they were tiered. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. If you'd like to start us off.
Yes, um this has been my uh week of training. Um started off on the fourteenth of last week with the CJC Symposium. Uh that brings together all the professionals in the state of Utah, many of the professionals in the state of Utah dealing with child uh child abuse crimes. Uh lots of heavy um heavy topics. We're talking about, you know, uh sexual abuse of children, rape of children, and really tough, tough topics. Uh it's an annual convention that's put on. It gives additional training and information. And it's put on by the state. It's a wonderful opportunity. Um and based on the funding from the CJC, we're able to send um quite a few professionals here. And a lot of those folks are members of the MDM or the MDT team. So uh that was a wonderful training. Currently, I'm in Texas for the ICCR post convention on uh the Conference on Crimes Against Women. Um this training started on Sunday. Grand County was selected. Uh basically by the heavy lift that Detective Sterry did. He uh applied for this grant and the grant sent four of us here um fully paid on the flight, the hotel stay and the registration for the conference. And to give you an uh idea of the size of this conference, it's two thousand five hundred people that attend the conference. And it starts off for the cohorts, which are the selected communities or the selected, really, really just um sixteen people. Uh that started on Sunday and then it goes Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. Uh it brings a lot of professionals around to talk about the issues of domestic violence. Um domestic violence is a substantial problem throughout the entire United States and and Grand County is not uh free from that issue. And in fact, we have one of the highest rates in the state of Utah per capita. And so um we're getting additional information. One of the things that we're focusing on is evidence-based prosecution. What that means is trying to have strong enough cases that we don't even need the victim to testify. And that in a lot of cases is a really difficult um difficult decision for a victim to testify against their perpetrator. Because as you all know, in Moab, uh it's very expensive. And so a lot of folks uh disengage with with prosecution because they want to return with their uh not not want to return with their views, but really uh it feels like the walls are closing in. That's the only option. So this has been a great training. I'm still trying to catch up on all the emails with everyone. So if anyone needs me, uh feel free to give a call. Uh I know Commissioners Hadler and Winfield know I I keep odd late hours. So any commissioners need anything between now and then, you just give me a call and I appreciate everyone.
Thank you, Stephen. Um do we have the sheriff online?
Yep, I'm on my phone, so bear with me. I'm in Washington DC. Um real quick, so the C ten, as Commissioner Winfield reported on, they uh Chase, he was the organizer of that. His for his first event, he raised fifteen thousand dollars. And he donated that to the Sheriff's Search and Rescue Team. So that was pretty amazing. He says he wants to come back next year. He thinks he can double that event. Um and he plans to donate that money again to search and rescue. Little quick story about Chase. He was rescued by our search and rescue team approximately twenty years ago where when he fell eighty feet and search and rescue had to rappel down to him. Um we've hired an evidence tech position. We've never had one of those. So I'm very grateful that the commission um approved one of those evidence techs positions. She's going through about forty years of evidence and unclaimed property currently. And so it's gonna be a long tedious process, but she's doing a great job. We officially closed the Ankoski's case. Uh Ray was located deep down in the San Juan County. Um so we brought some closure there for that case, which was very, very great. Um several search and rescue uh teams from around the state showed up and helped on that. Um I've made an offer for the new emergency manager position. Once they accept that position, I'll uh speak about that and introduce them to the commissioners as well. And that's about all I have. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Sheriff Wiggins. We appreciate that. I'm glad to see that the search and rescue benefited from an event here in town. And I will move on to our clerk auditor.
None of this time, thanks, Sheriff.
Okay, nothing there. We can move on to our Oh, Stephen, yes, sir.
Uh Chair Winfield, I just noted another item. I didn't know if the it we were going to go through the drought mitigation report by Commissioner Hadeen or if we've already addressed that within the report.
Yeah, we already adjusted.
Yeah, she touched on it in her regular report. Thank you for reminding me because I did miss that. Yeah, I just missed the presentation. I missed it on the agenda. All right, so administration.
We are still working through the process of hiring some individuals, um, onboarding them. Uh, hopefully we'll have some uh new additions before long that we can report to you all. Um, we're also working through as a staff on presenting a recommendation as far as the building department goes as well. We haven't came to a conclusion yet, but we are working on that recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Quinn, you have anything to add? All right, we will move into our regular general business section here, the approval of consent agenda items. And Commissioner McCurdy.
I need pull uh consent item label O. Uh, bid award for playground and pickleball uh court at Osta approving uh and approving chair to sign all associated documents on legal. I can pull that off uh consent agenda.
Okay, and so we can go through the rest of the consent agenda and touch on. Is there another one you want to pull off?
Yeah, yeah, um, F ratification of non-conversion agreement from the building department. And that one, if possible, and I'm not sure of the exact procedures for this, but I would like to postpone that to the next meeting and actually make it an action item where the, where um planning and zoning describes, explains that to us. Because I think it's actually fairly complex and I think it should be on the consent agenda. And I can, I can dive into it more, but I think.
Okay, so we'll go through the consent agenda with the removal of item F and item O. And we will discuss those two with whether we want to table them to a meeting at the end of the consent agenda. Okay, so I will read through the rest of this. Approval of the meeting minutes from May sixth, twenty twenty five for the Grand County Commission and the CDB second public hearing. And for ratification of payments and bills, the bills amounted to eight hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents, with the payroll amounting to eighty thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifteen cents for a total of one million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. And inside the consent agenda will be the ratification of local consent for Red Cliffs Lodge times three. Ratification of local consent for Moab Brewers for the Grand County Fair. E ratification of local consent for Red Rock Rally. Skipping F that was removed, moving on to G ratification of sojourn advertising agreement. H ratification of NRCS grant reimbursement request. I ratification of amended independent contractor agreement for Star Hall Roof Replacement. J approval of service agreement with Sea Change Printing and Marketing Services LLC or election, election printing services. K independent contract agreement with Orox Engineering for OnCall Engineering and Planning Services. L approval of airport hangar lease with Jim Air. M Moab Office of Tourism Co-op Marketing Grant Application Approval. Skipping N, no, excuse me. N Utah Office of Tourism International Opt-In Program Fiscal Year Twenty-Six. Skipping O. Moving on to P, appointing the Grand County Fair Board as the Americas Two-Fifty Committee. Q Grand County Federal Lands Access Program Flap Grant Scoping. And R Land Convenance to Moab City. Commissioner McCurdy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner McCurdy adds red, second by Commissioner McCandless, all in favor. Passes unanimously and we can start with F. Trish, and decide if we want to discuss this in full now or table it till the next meeting.
We just think it would be best for the commission to have the full understanding from planning and zoning what this, what the implication of this is, because I think it's actually farther reaching than just this one particular item, if that makes sense. I think it could actually flow out into um quite a few other people doing the same thing. And basically what it bypasses is impact fees specifically for like groundwater and sewer in this instance. And I don't want to dive into this too much. Again, I just think it'd be best for us to have an update from planning and zoning as to what this truly is. I think I'll just leave it there.
Choosing to not vote on it, tables are correct.
I believe so.
If you guys are okay in making an action item to actually have P and Z just talk us through that.
Anything on this is sensitive, time sensitive for these folks. If, if not, then I say.
Just so we truly understand.
Do we need to make a motion? We need to make a motion to approve the sentence on the. If you postpone, we're table in it, you don't, you can table, table. It means it comes up again at this meeting. On the phone, did I say, did I say? And I think if you're going to postpone an action item, you need to vote on it.
Okay.
So we just need a motion to postpone.
Motion would be to postpone.
You need that motion to postpone item F.
I'll second that. Is that correct, Stephen? You're raising your hand.
I just, just wanted to know. I think that's correct, but there's a signed version of that document. So I just want to make sure that that signed document doesn't go out into the world. So maybe we want to make sure we pull back that signed document because it is executed. Um, and we just let the other person on the opposite end of this agreement, uh, I guess that's the uh Neeson. Uh, know that the document isn't yet approved. We're looking at it. Um, so I, I think that communication is important. I think you could do a motion to postpone. I think you could also just let it uh just lapse. Either way, I think postponement's clean, but make sure you get that, that contract back.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, motion by Commissioner McGann, second by Commissioner Hadeen, all in favor of postponing. Passes unanimously on to item O.
McCurdy. Yeah, the bid award for playground and pickleball court. Um. Very important topic, uh, just in the sense of, uh, I am going to uh vote that we, or put to vote that we table this until we can go farther through our budgeting, our, our future budget workshop. Um, it is very important to our community, but at a six hundred thousand dollar matching grant price tag right now, uh, we need to know where those funds are going to come from. Uh, and uh, I only want to table this until we can get through those budget talks and use it as a talking to, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Hadler.
Yeah, yeah, and you, you don't mean table, you mean postpone, right? Okay, and then the other thing I was going to say is, I believe this, uh, I'm with Mike on that. I think, I think, I think postponing till after uh to spend money until after a budget discussion is, is prudent for many of these items. But this one, I believe, is in our budget. And I, I referred to Gabe to that. Was, was this in the twenty twenty-five budget, Gabe?
Yes.
Who believe it was in the pre-authorized uh?
Right, that's what I thought.
Well, the grant award was accepted, um, and we do have in the, in thirty-two, the Capital Projects General Fund. Uh, there are budgeted funds available for such a request. Though, you know, this would, this would always inevitably, you know, come up for, for approval.
Yeah.
Think due to, especially due to its scale.
Yeah, but, but yeah, it, it definitely, I, I think I, it affects my thinking about this as to whether it was in the budget from last year.
Commissioner Martin.
I gave you another question. Which uh, uh, account was that budgeted out of?
The Capital Projects General Fund, Capital Buildings.
I, uh, in saying that, I would like to postpone it till we go through budget workshops. I'd like to make the motion to postpone until uh at a time we go through the budget workshops and are able to look through it a little farther.
Okay, motion by Commissioner McCurdy. I'll second. Second by Commissioner Hadler. All in favor? Passes unanimously.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Do we, do we know if there's a, a contract connected with this? We want to make sure that we're compliant with that, with the grant as well. So there might be a required spend by a, a particular time. And I want to make sure that, go ahead.
And Commissioner McCurdy, I believe you mentioned something about the.
In, yes, uh, in speaking with Angie, uh, there is a time, uh, a timeline that we need to make a decision on this. Uh, it, this allows for now to be postponed, but we can run out the end of the fiscal year. Is that what?
Yeah, I have to report by the end of this fiscal year. The only thought of concern is the price of the equipment is going up.
Yes. Okay, is it, and by fiscal year, do you mean June thirtieth or?
Uh, September. I think it's September I have to report.
Oh, it's a September, okay, thank you.
But I, I mean, by all of the manufacturers, the price of the equipment is going up.
Right.
Literally daily.
So we'll assume, I mean, we're obviously going to talk about this, but we'll assume our budget workshop will be soon.
I, I want it days.
Okay.
Yes.
And, and commu-, uh, commissioners, perhaps I could be so brave as to suggest maybe setting a particular month you want to see this back. Just we, I mean, there's so many things that are going on that I think it might be a good idea to put it back on the agenda just as a placeholder. But I defer to the commission, of course.
You mean postpone it till next meeting?
Yeah, I put it on the next meeting.
Yeah, I don't see anything better than that either.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to number four, amendment to the podcast contract. Addie, move over to this. And Alice.
Hello. Okay, so there's quite a bit of background in the agenda item. I'm, I can give another rundown of the background, but I'm wondering if there's any specific questions you guys have to, to guide my overview.
I got a rough one. Uh. We, we wanted these podcasts to go out previously or last year. And they just, they weren't, they're not done yet. Uh, but now the ones that we already paid for cost a little bit more money?
Uh, no.
Okay.
They won't cost more money. Um, this, we have to pay the rest of the contract when it finishes.
Yes.
Um, and then we have another, we have like a marketing opportunity. So we can pay three thousand dollars for advertising on the podcast if it airs on KZMU.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay, I'll launch into a little overview and then if you guys have questions to ask at the end. So some context, um, in February of two thousand twenty-four, we put out um a request for quotes. We got back six proposals. We selected KZMU as the um contractor for the project. The contract was executed in April of two thousand twenty-four and it was a collaborative project between what was previously the Economic Development Department and G cap. Um, and of course, Grand County Search and Rescue. We had the kickoff meeting April twenty-ninth. Um, the goals of the project were to kind of show class uh outdoor recreation opportunities we have. So a little bit of a different marketing segment than like the sightseer, like the national park visitor and more of the recreationist sort of adventure type. Um, to showcase Grand County Search and Rescue, because we do have just such like a unique and high functioning team here that does all kinds of like, they land helicopters in Castleton, stuff like that. Um, and then also to work in the responsible recreation information. So while we're telling this entertaining story about like these adventures and these rescues, also working in some information of like, and if you're coming to Moab, like here's how to like not end up in the situation and to adventure more safely. Um, so this project had, uh, or the contract has six deliverables, which are podcast episodes. And to make these happen, the work schedule was a research, planning and interview phase, um, an editing and production phase and a database hosting and distribution phase. And so the reason the timeline has been extended is because that research, planning and interview stage, the estimated hours for that were eighty and it ended up being two hundred and ninety-eight hours of the project manager's time at KZMU. Um, and the reason for that is because there was just a lot, lot more involved in um getting access to the. So for the podcast, we really wanted it to be like a, a good product, right? Which involves uh interviewing the people who were rescued and having that like firsthand account. That was really important to us. And in order to find the people to interview, there was a lot of um public outreach, including calls out in the newspaper. And then the project manager um having to, you know, work with the sheriff's department and the National Park Service to get the um sort of sensitive information of who those people were and then reach out to those folks. And then once we did that, we also really wanted it to be, um, we wanted the tone to be correct. So we didn't want this to be like a scary, don't come to Moab podcast. Like we really wanted it to be stories where like everything turns out okay, right? And it's like a, a fun um adventure. And so that also required a little bit of like sifting through different stories and picking ones that were really suitable with that goal. Um, so that ended up taking a long time. Um, and then also the collaboration aspect, so working with Grand County Search and Rescue to make sure that, you know, interviewing their staff. Uh, and that, you know, they were all being portrayed in the way that that um department uh wanted the message to go out. Getting the marketing perspective and then we kind of filled in for myself, like the outdoor recreation perspective of like what, you know, what stories might be suitable. Um, and so we kind of realized at the end of last year that the contract timeline needed to be amended. But that's honestly kind of like the crunch time for everything in the county, including like the budget. Um, and then we also had some staff turnover, so uh I think Ally had just started maybe.
Yeah.
And then we'd also previously been working with Aaron at Search and Rescue and then Scott came into that position. So uh, I was kind of the only one here from the beginning. And so the beginning of this year, we worked to, you know, get this contract amended to, to wrap up that um or to amend that timeline and tidy up the paperwork. And um, you know, we were injected to go through the, the MTAB. And they're also really busy, so the reason we've, we've kind of gotten from early, beginning of the year to now is just sort of seeing if we could get it on that agenda. Um, and it was tabled a few times. So then we talked to Stephen and it was recommended that we just, we bring it to the commission. So that's kind of how we got to this point. And we want to amend the contract so that we can begin to publish these podcasts because we're really proud of them.
And, and you said, uh, of the six, I think in your, you said four of them already in the can?
Yes, so uh, one of the episodes was split into two parts.
Okay.
So we have four episodes and then there will be three more coming that are all eighty to ninety percent complete.
Good, that is four a hundred percent complete.
Yes. And.
That's only four, three, right? Three are complete, but one of the third was split into two.
Yeah, so three stories are.
Three of the six.
Yeah.
Mary.
It, it says on the agenda that it is within budget. Uh, which budget is that?
It's in mine.
It's in yours, so you, you have within your budget covered this.
Yeah, and it's, so the, we paid the first installment upon execution of the contract. And so now the amount is four thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars for the final fifty percent of the budget. Okay.
I mean, whose, whose department was in charge of this contract?
Economic Development.
Yes, I'm just a little bit confused. So we missed our contract deadline completely. And we're coming back asking for an extension and additional money.
Yeah, we're coming back asking for an extension and also um showing that KZMU has offered to broadcast this on their own channels, which we do believe would end up, you know, pushing the podcast out better than um, us publishing on it, it on Discover Moab or on the Trails website it could. Um, and so that extra cost is what it would cost to broadcast it on KZMU if we wanted to underwrite it ourselves.
And if we just wanted to approve the budget, it sounds like you've already got the money budgeted and not do the additional three thousand. You're saying that that has been budgeted already?
Yep.
And we would just be giving an extension to the contract?
Correct, yeah.
And how long of an extension are they asking for?
Um, we asked for November thirtieth so that we would have three months to set up the RSS feeds ourselves. But the podcast will be done very soon. Um, we were chatting with Molly Marcello, who's also here. If you have any specific questions, and she said late June, mid-July, she'll have all the podcasts a hundred percent complete. So then it'll be on us to have the extra time to publish it. Yeah, and part of that too is like, uh, for the, the platforms for podcasts, like there's usually cover art and things like that, that we want a little time to get done without running into this again and needing to get another extension.
See, I'm not sure. I think Commissioner Martinez, then Hadler, did I get it backwards? See, I'm not sure. I think Commissioner Martinez, then Hadler, did I get it backwards?
Backwards.
Commissioner Hadler, please.
Them, them me.
Yeah. Great. I, I'll just get it started. I want to move, uh, to approve the amendments, the independent contractor agreement with KZMU. Moab Community Radio.
I'll second that. Oh, you already did it, Mike. Sorry.
No, no, I'm, I'm still just sitting.
No question.
Okay. The motion by Commissioner Hadler, second by Commissioner Hedin. I'm a little bit unclear. Is it for the additional time and additional money or is it for the additional time where, where?
It's for the time and money. Yes.
I am.
As presented, correct.
Okay, Commissioner McCurdy. I have a motion and a second. I'll open it up for discussion, Commissioner McCurdy.
Oh, I see.
Were you there?
Doesn't matter. I, I still have a question right here.
Oh, you go ahead and I'll go next.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So are we right now then in breach of contract?
Uh, technically, yes, the contract is expired.
Okay. And Stephen, and, and I, I know you got your hand raised, but can I just get your opinion on these new amendments that we have to this contract? And are they favorable to the county or not?
Um. Yeah, you can. If you have specific questions or let me, if you want to jump into questions, I can answer them.
Um, he just asked a question of you. Do you need it repeated?
Uh, no, I, I understand the question. So he, a, a couple of things to note on these, on these items. Um, on section three, they've added on a right to broadcast the, the work product.
Yeah.
Uh, that's, that's not always that's not always great, uh, for the county. I don't know what the county's plans with the work product to their, um, for them to do. If they want to uh, mobilize traffic to the county's website, then perhaps they would, would not want to share, but they may want to share. Um, so that's one item. Underwriting wasn't part of the original contract and it wasn't part of the original advertising scheme. Anytime we have advertising with a connected item to the government, it creates headaches. And, and here's an example. If somebody, for example, um, the city's about to enter into a political cycle, what if somebody starts paying for political ads at the beginning of these? Uh, what happens if an adverse person, uh, say, for example, the Smith Bike Company, and no offense to, if there's Smith Bike Company out there, if they have somebody that gets wrecked, wrecked on their bike, then maybe the anti-Smith company comes out and says, oh man, don't go with Smith Company. You'll get your bike wrecked. So underwriting presents additional headache. Um, additionally, they've added in an outro intro that's mandatory. Um, it states regardless of the under, underwriting, the work product shall include the following sponsorship credit when aired. That wasn't part of the original contract. And the concern that I have is they're adding on additional things and, and selling, um, selling pitches or, or, or partnership items, and that wasn't what was intended in the original contract. Those items weren't there. And so those are things that would normally give me a bit of a stomach ache or grumbling because we lose control of that and then they're creating a product and selling ads into the product and then giving that to us. I think that's not necessarily what the county wants. Um, maybe we look at either just increasing the budget by that amount. I think that's so much more cleaner um, than, than having them sell ads. So those, those are my qualms with it. I, I think if you want, you can amend the contract. Um, that's within the power that the county has. The best practice would be to make sure that the contract doesn't expire before it comes to us. Um, but those additional add-ons, um, just add additional wrinkles and normally I I don't know, the commission's already had one item regarding advertising and then everybody in the public kind of gets grumpy about who's advertising in what way, where, you know, the messaging. And so I think that presents just an additional headache and uh, more obligation on kind of following up and maintenance on that for the county. So just noting that.
Commissioner McCurdy, um, my question was back to Stephen, uh, and, and you all. Uh. When we originally take, uh, for the product, did we Stephen, in that original contract, did we retain full ownership of said product?
Yeah. And I, I don't think they're going to claim that an intellectual property ship request. What they put in there is instead a broadcasting right. So they wouldn't say that they own the product, but it's a broadcasting right. There, there isn't a broadcasting right, um, in the original contract and there isn't underwriting in the original contract. But again, this is an item that's going to be created to be, um, sent out into the world. And so I, I think it makes sense to have other partners broadcast it. But having somebody have an exclusive right to it or have a right to it kind of does. Um. It may or may not be what the goal of the county is. And so that's up to the policy, uh, decision makers to decide how they want to do that.
Yeah. And so i- i- if I'm just getting this correct, whether we approve this or do not approve this, we will still receive the six, uh, uh, podcasts, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Still have ownership of the six podcasts either which way.
Yes. And, um, the underwriting line is just if we, if it was going on KZMU and then Grand County, like the Moab Office of Tourism wanted to put our own voice into it, then, uh, we should underwrite it for this fee. It's not saying that KZMU is going to sell underwriting around. Or that we would sell ads that people could produce. It would come from our office and from our media agency.
So, so the underwriting would be exclusively Grand County?
Mm-hmm. That's right. Yeah.
So the Smith bicycle company couldn't underwrite it?
Yes, that's right. If we pay the three thousand dollars, then we are running our own ads while the podcast airs on KZMU.
And there would be no selling of
A lot of things, Stephen.
No, go ahead, Stephen. I'm sorry. So the, the one other part that says it, the county can underwrite it. So it, it does provide an option, but regardless, if you look at section four, you've got sponsorship and production credits. Regardless of the underwriting, the work product shall include the following sponsorship credit when aired. Episode intro. Back, uh, back from beyond is made possible by, and then it goes into that. I, I don't know why we're adding this on. They, we could add that on through the Moab Office of Tourism. We can put those things in. We don't need we, we have the skills within the department to be able to do those things. And I don't know that the frustration on my end is this is a contract that originally was supposed to be for four months. It's far exceeded that amount of time. And these are additional things that should be able to be addressed. Uh, really expeditiously through, within the department. So I don't, I don't know why it's coming back for additional uh, requests for funding. If this is something that's a product that KZMU wants to list on their outro and take credit for, uh, that I don't know why they're turning around to their partner in this situation and asking for another three thousand dollars. That's what doesn't, it doesn't make sense in this. And, and we don't have anybody from KZMU here. And that's the other part that's a little odd.
We do actually.
Oh, excellent. Sorry. I can't see who's in the room. Well, that, that's excellent to see because one of the other things is we're having, you know, I've never had the opportunity to talk to KZMU and the inter, the communication's been going through the department, which is um, it's just another add-on.
Do we want to let KZMU come up to address that portion of it?
I, I think it would be helpful for the commission to understand what's caused some of the delay. I mean, this is, this is abnormal for contracts. Um, to be this, this extended out into the scope. I, I think it would be helpful for us, for the commission. And again, the commission decides if they want that information. But this is a product that was supposed to be delivered by November of last year and we're into May of this year and we still don't have the, the completed project.
Yes, please, if you folks would allow them to come up maybe and make them forward.
My name is Mary White and I'm on the board of trustees with KZMU. Um, hello, everybody. I'm Molly Marcello, um, and I am the contractor and that's contracting with KZMU to project. And I'm also used to be part of the Economic Development Department and was part of actually getting this project going. Um, so a little context, I think it was covered pretty well by Maddie about just the the delay in the contract. Um, it's really just the workload to make the phenomenal product that these podcasts are, um, was much more complex than was anticipated when we signed the contract. It's pretty much that simple, just with the respect to all the departments involved. Um, and also the, the people that were the saved victims, people like there, that just took a lot longer than we anticipated. So.
Yeah. And I'll just add to piggyback on what Maddie said to, you know, finding the right stories to tell for this product, project was really important to us. And so I spent a lot of time with Search and Rescue to make sure that we told the stories that, um, highlighted how professional they are, um, how taken care of our tourists are in the back country if they do get into trouble. And, you know, the different stories, um, really do highlight tips and tricks to stay safe in the back country. So that took a lot of groundwork, took, took a lot of relationship building. It took, uh, multiple rounds of grammar requests for incident reports, special permissions from the sheriff's office to give me permission to talk to subjects. Um, all of that took time to, to do, to do it right and to do it well.
I, um, have concern with the additional expense. I also have concern with contracts at the county in general, not just this one, but we're talking December, January, February, March, April, May. We're just now hearing that we're out of compliance on the contract. And so any contract within the county, once we pass that deadline date and we haven't met our what we're supposed to receive for the money paid, I would like to encourage all departments in the county to start overseeing their contracts and bringing those forward immediately. The, hey, we're going to run over time. Not six months after we're over. And then asking for, I'm not sure how much more in additional, how many months that we want here. So that's just me personally. I deal with contracts and the contracting business on a regular basis. And when you don't meet your deliverables, you're usually fired. You're, you're not given additional money and an extension. And, and I would be supportive of this moving forward with an extension, but I, I struggle with the idea of putting additional money out from the county when we've this far over our deadline on a contract here. That's my personal, but we do have an emotion and if somebody else wants Mike, please.
Can I make a substitute motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we move to approve uh, extending, uh, the contract, uh, as it sits until completion upon contract. Uh, November or within the timeline. What was the date?
November thirtieth.
November thirtieth on original contract and uh, to speak about future amendments, uh, after so. Does that hit all the points there, Dave? Or Stephen?
So essentially you're just looking to take the original contract, scratch out twenty twenty-four and just put twenty twenty-five? And push it out.
Until November twenty-third?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh. Give me deliverables. We'll move on after that.
Okay, I have a mo- substitute motion on the table. Do I have a second?
No second.
I'll second that. If I can ask a question. Can I ask a question before I second it?
That's fine.
Before I second it because I, I'm a little confused. Okay, so and I'm a little confused. I just wanted
Dude, no police.
Your, your, uh, emotion as well.
Very, it's murky.
What you're saying, I don't know. I don't, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but this is what I or interpret. Is that you're saying uh, move, you know, give permission to extend the contract? Till, till it's completed until November. And uh, then look at and consider if we underwriting. And that's where my question comes to you. If we do the underwriting, is, is is it important to do the underwriting at the same time that we're completing these projects? Or can we complete the project and then, uh, go, you know, let, I think it, it would be a really good idea to get this out further by da, 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 da. And that's going to cost this much and then uh, bring it to us then. Is that going to be an hiccup? Or is that pretty doable for you? I've seen.
No, that's absolutely doable. We can complete the project and then we can make a marketing plan.
Then you can come back to us to say that we want to do this.
Right. We thought it would be clean to add within this ownership rights, an amendment, talking about what KZMU could do for us. But obviously that's getting a little murky. So we can just complete the project and do the marketing.
Now that I, now that I've asked, uh, uh, to those two, this man?
Um. Uh, I just was hoping we asked Scott to come and Scott kind of I mean, Aaron was the project manager and then Scott has kindly jumped into this project and has gotten like, you know, filled in the last uh, few weeks about, um, you know, the background to this. And so I just want to thank Scott and acknowledge that he came to this meeting. And then also Scott, if you have anything you'd want to add, I want to make sure you get a chance to say something since you are here at almost six o'clock. Yeah.
That's what I do. Um. I think you, uh, you if I'm not mistaken, they should have access to some of those, uh, recordings. And I guess I just encourage you to listen to even the first one. I think it highlights the different types of outdoor recreation we have in Moab. And it, it is an adventure story. And I think it would be personally, I think it's advantageous if uh, if we were able to reduce just one rescue, we would save the county. I think, uh, considerable payroll. Um, as just one example. And I, I did compile some numbers. I uh, I met with ZEMS this morning, um. And I asked Andy, I said, well, what does, um, you know, what is, what does it cost for one EM, uh, EMS call? And that number was around twenty-five hundred dollars. And, um, a lot of times EMS will come with us on a call and yet they don't get the bill. Um, those subjects, because it's very possible that classic air medical is taking them to a different hospital. So they they didn't get those fees or the subjects are brought down, uh, possibly treated and then self-transport. Um, so that would to not have, to, to be able to provide people with, I think, uh, some knowledge to, to not get rescued would, would save EMS money. And then also you know, you look at the, just the hours as, as to what search and rescue would put in for context, just this week, we did a, a Mill Creek call. Uh, you know, left-hand. Pretty basic. It takes ten people, three hours, um, to complete that call. That's that's a, a simple one that would come in and at maybe around seven hundred and fifty dollars and just payroll. Some of the more complex rescues. Say like on Castleton. Um, or, you know, some, maybe a, a climbing accident. That can take anywhere from twelve rescuers, eight hours. And you're, you're looking, uh, probably more on the lines of like forty-five hundred dollars. So, um, I guess what I want to say is it, it showcases the different activities that we do. It's an adventure story and people who come here to adventure, I think, like those stories, especially when they're driving here. Sure. Many of you put in a podcast when you're traveling somewhere. And if, if we could get the message out that simple things, learn how to ascend a rope or take a flashlight or a map or as, you know, keep your cell phone charged or any of these number of things, uh, to help you out of a situation would save the county money. On the same time, I think showcasing what we, what we have here, which is incredible recreation. These as I look, I, I've read through most of the uh, the, the dialogue or the, uh, the scripts. Uh, and listen to the first ones and, and they, they, they're wide range of activity. So it's not any sing- singular focus. And I did come into this project halfway through and I think it also showcases what, uh, what, what my team gets to do and I'm definitely proud of that. So.
Yes, John. Um. Uh, before voting on the motion, so they, with, with Mike's amended or substitute motion, um, the project would still get the forty-five hundred and then we, at a later date, we could determine whether we wanted to, uh, buy into KZMU. Yeah, with.
You know, the forty-five hundred is at, at, at the deliverables, right? At the end of the contract.
Right, at the end, right.
Yeah, which is already.
So, so it's, so that would still get paid to and then we decide on the three thousand. And then, and so that forty-five hundred is basically like um, that would cover your three hundred, almost three hundred hours in, Molly. That's yeah. I mean, I think, I think it's an incredible value for the county, like forty-five hundred bucks. Wow. Um, so anyway, if, if it sounds like you guys probably aren't going to support my motion and I would think that, uh, I I'm still very much in fair mind, but, but I think we should get something out of this and I would, uh, necessary support, Mike.
Yes, Mike.
I just want to come out. I did not in any way want to diminish any of the stories. I, I, I'm very happy. I want to see them. Uh, I, I feel like we paid for them. I want to see them and then we want to start. Uh I, I feel like we pay for them, I wanna see them and then we want to start discussion to get them out. But gotta get them on, gotta get the contract fulfilled as was or as it was uh and then get it out, is how I feel.
All right, if there's not any further, oh Brian.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, just, just kinda going with what Mike said, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a great, great opportunity to reach people. Uh I really wish that either through the end tab meetings that I attended, that this was tabled. Um or right now that we actually had a chance to actually see what part of the product was, knowing that there are two already available. I think that would have helped this out quite a bit. Uh the second, I just kinda wanna, you know, just voice my concern with the department right now on not meeting its contracts. Um this is the second contract that's come up before us that's basically either been delayed or is a breach of contract. And I think that we really need to start paying attention to, you know, that, that, that we're meeting our timelines and that our deliverables are met.
Yeah, I apologize if you guys weren't able to, it was our understanding that you have received four of the episodes to listen to.
Permission of again.
Uh I just wanna uh uh thank search and rescue, like the work that you do is amazing. We are fortunate, I mean beyond fortunate to have such professional people willing to give their time to this. And Molly, I wanna thank you for your willingness to go way beyond your contract hours. To create what sounds like an exceptional process, project, process. And uh I'm really excited for it to continue and be something. You know, what I listen to is exceptional.
All right, if there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote on the substitute made by Commissioner McCurdy. And seconded by Commissioner McGann, which is to finish the contract out by changing the date to November of this year. Without the extension of money for the emotional side of this. So all in favor of the substitute motion. And that passes unanimously and we will move this forward. Uh my will say that only one complaint I have. Is that since I've been in diapers, that has been called asshole rock. And I refuse to, I don't remain with that mountain if somebody else would like to change it.
You guys got that email.
Thank you, folks.
Top of your books, Tim.
Okay, thanks. That is.
All right, so we will move on to item number five, the approve. Approve the creation of an economic development coordinator and public information officer position. This is with the commission administrators, office and Tess. Hello Tess.
Hi there, how are you?
Good.
Good. Um I, I already see some hand raised, so we'll go ahead and.
You go ahead, I, I just. We, we'll talk.
Do we wanna let her present and then start with the questions or?
I think.
We wanna, Mike, go ahead, I think, was Mike first or Mary?
I think I was.
Go ahead, ladies first.
Okay, uh I.
Approve of this. Uh you know, I, I've pushed for years to have a uh someone to do PR. And we definitely need someone in the uh position of economic development. But just like what we, what we did with the previous, I, that's why I think. I think we should postpone this. Because it's a money item and we are facing so many. And I, I would like to postpone this to the next meeting after we have our budget workshop that I would like to.
And I'll say, I'll second the motion. Yeah, I think, I think these large money items should be postponed until after the budget workshop.
Motion by Commissioner McGann, seconded by Commissioner Hadeen, discussion, Michael.
I'd like to make a substitute motion. Uh I've moved to approve the creation of an economic development coordinator and public information coordinator position. And authorize personal services to begin the recruitment process. And now I need to talk about.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner McCurdy, seconded by Commissioner Martinez, discussion, Mike.
Uh we just had a contract in front of us that wasn't followed through. And wasn't followed up and reported back to us that it wasn't followed up on in the economic help department, department. I already know of at least fourteen other contracts that haven't been followed through. Out of the economic department or economic development department, we need someone to hold the contracts feet to the fire. And I cannot, we, we need this previous to my tenure here. Uh we need someone following these contracts and reports on where the money's going, what it's being used for, et cetera. And we need to know when dates and these contracts actually come up and pass and we don't have deliverables.
Commissioner Hadler.
Is that in his job description? That Mike just talked to, better be it's department head.
It's a, it's.
Your position, so if it's due to commission administration, they won't have the same authority as.
Agreed. But they would say, they would be the people looking into if the contract. A year out, uh we contracted, any of these a year out, look into and report to comm admin. This contract didn't hit that, didn't hit their target. They're not gonna hit their timeline target. Wouldn't it be directly them to comm admin then to commission?
Is it possible that we could have Tess present so that?
Guys, if you had pants to kind of explain what was going on.
So I appreciate that. No, I'm always happy to receive the earth. It helps me direct my presentation a, a little bit more specifically, which is nice. And so for this position, the economic development and public relations coordinator. Which is a proposed job title, could have other job titles. Um in our, just my department's discussions in collaboration with commission administration, what we've arrived on. Is that this position would have, what we approximate is a seventy five percent, twenty five percent split. Seventy five percent of the position, um position holders' time would be devoted to economic development initiatives. Twenty five percent of the position individuals' time would be um devoted to PR items. Um with that being said, for the job description. Uh we previously had an economic development specialist position within the now former economic development department. Um so that, that description was heavily relied on um for the economic development portion and then for the public. Portion um went ahead and um analyzed a number of job descriptions, both government-based as well as private. Private industry-based uh public relations coordinator slash specialist positions. Some of these items, I will say, just in any job description. A, a two-page outline certainly doesn't encompass what we do on a daily, weekly, monthly, yearly basis. And so some items I would anticipate will need, again, future coordination and really fleshing out this position. With commission administration as the direct supervisor for this position. So it is certainly a potential that this position would be tracking contracts related to economic development to ensure that we are maintaining compliance. Um but that, that would be an item for discussion based on the needs of the position.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So it's not written in there, correct?
Okay.
It, it does discuss tracking um. Grants and I, I need to look back through it, I apologize. I, I wish I could memorize the, the two-page job description word for word. Unfortunately, I'm not, I've not honed that skill set quite yet. And. It would be tracking progress on, on economic development initiatives and. Projects and so again, it, it could be interpreted that that action item would fall within that or portion of the job description.
Commissioner Martins.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a couple of comments real quick, coming back to what Sherwood said. So, I mean, I'm, I'm all in favor for an economic development uh position. Um you know, I mean, I spoke with comm admin and uh um, you know, they're, they're definitely spending a lot of their time right now. Dealing with all of these grants. It's been great, you know, that we got these, this board has done just a fantastic job of receiving. Uh fielding all of these grants for um for our community. And I think that, you know, this position right here is gonna actually. Create more funding for our county, which is gonna be fantastic. Um on top of that, you know, this idea that we can have a public information officer as well. Um I mean, I think it suits, suits two needs um very well for the county. And then the second thing is, is this position was originally budgeted for, right? This position was set up. However, it was misused by the TRT, right? This was the position that Ben Alter was inside of. However, we were funding it with TRT. That was the reason that we took this position out, right? So now what I'm asking, cause and I, and I spoke with Gabe on this, the plan was originally that we were gonna go ahead and just reimburse this then from the general fund. So what is it? Did we not know that, that we were funding this out of TRT uh uh inappropriately, as I think it was finding for? Or is it that we are not okay with, with uh um, that, yeah, either that we were not funding this with, with TRT, right? Or that we don't wanna fund it, fund it out of the general uh fund?
Mike was first.
Uh you guys are chatting away now.
I, I guess.
Commission.
Say you were following up. All I said was I wanted to postpone it till after the budget workshop. So I, I said nothing about TRT or how it was funded or all I said, I wanted to postpone it till after the budget workshop.
So.
Commissioner McCurdy.
Question, uh will this, inside that two-page job description, uh is this person able to write their own? Uh grant proposals uh for economic development also?
Grantmanship is a, is a component of this. It's, it's a paragraph item on this job description, so they would be in charge of um. You know, providing proposals and recommendations, writing and then managing the grant funds.
Helping pay for themselves.
All right, their projects.
We have a motion and a substitute motion.
It's the second substitute motion. Sorry.
Yeah.
I'm just wanted to comment then.
Please.
All right, so I just, you know, being the liaison for the Economic Opportunity Advisory Board, I think that there's a lot of opportunity um that can be. Captured with this position. I think that this um position has a return on its investment, so it's not just an expense, but it's going to. Um bring, bring in money to the county. It, it won't just be servicing those grants. But it will be, um I mean, we have people that are looking in at, at different spaces in Utah. They wanna come and bring business to Utah. Admin gets emails about it all the time. What do they do with them? I mean, they're busy right now. They don't really have those relationships, so having that economic up um. Position out there that knows where the places are, where the real estate is, what things are, it's a super important position and I am in favor of funding it. And the public relations piece is just really important as well. So we're getting that information out, positive information and just what's going on in our community. So I don't, I don't look at it as an expense. I understand the waiting until after the budget workshop because we are spending money. But I do think that it's something that's gonna create in money to our community. And, and it's hard to find, I mean, finding people that are qualified for this, so if we can get the position out there. It's gonna take a little while before we get the right person hired anyway.
Yes, Commissioner Hadler.
I, I, I support this position also. I have advocated for a public information officer ever since I got on commission. And I saw a ton of value in the economic development position. I saw a ton of value in it being where it was four months ago and I voted against moving it out of that department. Um but it is a super necessary position. I, I think it's great. I even, but I think the process is also important. And as long as we're talking about spending a lot of money in various areas, uh I don't personally see any issue with delaying for two weeks. And again, at, at some point, I will support this position uh whether it's tonight or in two weeks. Uh but I, I think the process is important. And if we're looking at things as a whole, the budget as a whole, and we have this thing coming up, then, then why not wait?
Okay, I am going to allow you to speak, Mary, briefly, but I would like to call for a vote.
I have, I have a question first.
Please.
I, 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 I'm wondering because I think, I think the hangup, I think all of us, you know, support both of these positions. I just think it's important right now because we're in a, in a crossroads that uh we look at everything as a whole. Rather than, you know, piecemeal in it like we've been doing, you know, so. That's why I wanted to do the budget workshop was to, to take out and say, okay, these are all the requests we have. And they all add up to this much. And how are we gonna do it? Or, or, you know, are we gonna have to work to change the. Uh level or the, you know, what step they're on, great, it would be great not to, great, excuse me. So that we can afford it this year. Uh that's what I'm thinking of, because I definitely think we need this job. I don't even, we need this job though. I have to, I, that is not my concern. I'm just, you know, so I don't know. I'm more concerned about the cost, you know, we're looking at everything at once. And making a decision. And so my question, I guess, was, I guess you couldn't. So maybe my question was, so. Was, could you uh. Pretty much uh approve the job description right now? Without having like uh a money cost to it, maybe not putting the grade in until we look at everything?
We, we have a motion on the table, Mary, that we have to vote on. We have a substitute.
Could you answer my question, please?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm answering it that we have to vote on the substitute motion, which will decide the answer to your question. If it's. Voted down, then yes, if.
So, so I think that that's a great question. And the reason I say that is because, again, based on the, the information and the needs expressed to me. Um we did our best in, in classifying this position where it became that coordinator title position. And then based on that job description and the functions of it, did a compensation analysis. Um which helped me come up with the pay range, allowing a job grade to be assigned. If we essentially say we actually want this position to be exactly what the. Previous Assistant Economic Development Director's position did in addition to PR, that would. Be increasing the, the grade essentially, um increasing the level of responsibility, et cetera, of the position. Um so depending on the, the specific goals and needs that the commission um determines the county needs as a whole. That, that could change what my recommendation would be for the grade of the position from what it currently is.
So we'll call for a vote on the substitute made by Commissioner McCurdy, seconded by Commissioner Martinez.
Can you repeat the substitute just one more time?
For the approval of this position of. The creation of an economic development coordinator and public information officer position. Um all in favor. Those opposed? Abstaining?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion passes. To uh against Commissioner Hadeen and Commissioner McGann with one extension, Commissioner Hadler. And I will move on to the item number six, the purchase of the Children's Justice Center location. Oh, thank you, citizens to be heard. I stand corrected, sorry, folks. Um citizens to be heard. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Theresa, please step forward, identify yourself and you've got three minutes to tell us at all.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So. Personally and professionally, many of you know who I am and what I do, but tonight I'm wearing the hat of a board trustee. For the Moab Arts Festival. This is a private nonprofit organization. I am in the process of stepping back from doing it after thirty years and trying to delegate some other do it and re-activate the board. But we are having it and because we are so fortunate in Moab to have so many special events, people don't realize when they are. Um Arts Festival is this weekend, okay? It's Saturday and Sunday at Swanee City Park. It is free to the public. We are very proud that most of the audience is half local and half out of town. I personally believe in-person events are extremely important for our community to come together and just chat. So again, y'all know the Arts Festival. If you don't, please pick up a program, so many different things to do. Locals galore gonna be there with music and artists in person to talk to you. And again, I would like to implore you to understand, in my position. Special events are very important for bringing people to Moab. I know it's a beautiful place. But I believe special events bring he, people here as much as the beauty. So thank you so much. I'll leave some information in your boxes in the office, cause I know you have all kinds of stuff to do, but please come out to the festival.
Thank you, Heather. So do we have anybody else in the audience that would like to speak, citizens to be heard? Thank you, Teresa. Do we have anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Citizens to be heard? Ms. Bauer? Yes, usually we allow once per meeting, but please come ahead. You're not aware of.
I was not aware of that. I'm switching my hat though. So hi, I'm Sterling Bauer. I'm on the board of directors for Tread Lightly. And as, uh, the trails topic is going to come up here in a few minutes, I do want to say that education is very important. And that is also something that Tread Lightly follows through with as well. So as you guys are looking at this program and the funding for it and the pieces of the pie to it, potentially look at, you know, how can the buckets get flopped? So if it doesn't fit in one bucket, maybe fit into a different bucket. Uh, Tread Lightly is also something, a group that potentially we could talk to on a bigger picture and a bigger scale of how we can support that bucket. So I'll keep it super short, but thank you for letting me switch my hat.
Do we have anybody else in the chambers? About online, Quinn, is there anyone there? We do have, no?
There is, but do you want, I think.
Oh, was there somebody else in the chambers that I missed? Oh, please. I didn't see your hand back there. My apologies, Kent.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you.
Please identify yourself for the people.
Um, talking about the Trail Ambassador Program, and I've been doing some research and thinking about this quite a bit. Um, it's not whether if the program is working or if the program's not working. What I'm concerned about is that um, by reading different things is that we're using funds that it's not intended for, such as the TRT funds. And if we're not in compliance with the state, I, I know that we have been in trouble before as a county for not using that money appropriately. And I have a big concern about this. Um, I, I personally like the people around the program and stuff, but my biggest concern is if we're in compliance with the state. And if we're not, uh, we need to figure out a way to get in compliance. And, uh, as you know, on the program, I, I don't know exactly how much money they're getting for, uh, the OHV grants. Uh, but I do know that the OHV grants, it's an educational, uh, process that the Trail Ambassador is doing. Uh, there is already a, a law in place that require OHV users, uh, especially ATBs and UTB drivers that they take a course called HB 180. It's, it's a, it's a compliance course for them to be able to drive on public grants. Well, if that's the case, then we already are educating our people that are coming to the area. And so we're getting a double education here is, is what's happening. But my biggest concern is, is, uh, if we're using the money illegally, then we need to stop it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please.
Excuse me. My name is, uh, Lynn Jackson. I'm going to start a timer here. As usual, I always say can think of a lot more things to say than three minutes allows. Uh, I want to talk a little bit about the TRT and the GCAT and the Trail Ambassador Program. I've, I've been at you guys' seat, as you know, and it's a tough seat to be in, uh, and it's going to get harder because all the metrics that I'm seeing, this county is headed toward a fiscal cliff. All our numbers are down. Our visitation seems to be down. Our sales tax is down, our TRT tax is down, but as we know, costs aren't going down, uh, for governments. So I, I appreciate some of the things I heard earlier about, uh, postponing some of these things. Oops, excuse me. Um, until you have a better idea, I think Trail Ambassadors and some of the work of the, uh, Grand County Trail Program fit right in that, that bill last I seen. It was nearly $600,000. So what you need to do and what we as county residents and taxpayers expect is for you guys to manage this budget so that a year or two years from now you're saying, oops, guess what? We've got to raise everybody's property tax. We can see this coming. The numbers are all there. So you guys have the opportunity to manage this. And that's what taxpayers expect. The other thing I would mention goes along the lines of what Kent said. Uh, I'm a little bit concerned about, about this program. Uh, and that we had an audit, as, as you know, the state auditor just last year that said, yeah, you guys are out of compliance and what's worse is we think you knew about it. And they kind of gave us some things to do and we did it. And, uh, as near as I can tell right now, we're doing the same thing again. Yet I can tell you from past experience, that does not bode well for us upstate. Uh, the optics of that are, are pretty bad. You know, one time, uh, making a mistake like that, you'd say, well, oops, we had a misinterpretation. That's a mistake. Uh, the second time around raises questions. So I think that's a little legitimate concern. Um, the, the last thing I would say about this Trail Ambassador Program is this is not a, doing federal work at county taxpayers' expenses is, is not what the county should be doing. I get it. It's a big job out there. There's a ton of ways to partner. Our local tax revenue money, particularly for TRT mitigation, needs to be spent on priority critical things for our county and our residents, such as EMS. Not passing out trash bags or waste bags or bottles of water at trailheads on federal land. There's a lot of way to get that information out there. We've heard about it tonight with some podcasts. We have websites. We have social media. We have the Tread Lightly Program. There's a lot of ways to get the message out there. Be safe and, and, and treat our lands, uh, uh, gently as gently as can. If I use my three minutes, my timer went off.
You have.
I have, okay, totally do that. Thank you, guys. Appreciate the job you do.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anybody else in the commission chambers? Do we have anybody online that would like to speak? Citizens to be heard?
Yes, we do.
Go ahead, AJ. AJ.
Thank you, Commissioner Winfield, commissioners. I wanted to start off, uh, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we hear you.
Very good. Wanted to start off by thanking Mr. Curtis Wells for the work he does on the CIB. It's very valuable and I think he's a tremendous asset and contributing mentor, mentor to our community. I wanted to echo what he said and that it seems we've got a trend of leadership, you know, that I think we can improve on and then I think we are improving on and are going to continue to do just that, uh, both at the city and the county level. I wanted to speak briefly about the GCAT and the apparent misuse of funds on the Ambassador Program. I don't know if various commissioners just fancy being slapped around by the state auditor, but somehow we're back in this position again. While the GCAT fund misuse is the current topic for misappropriation, I think we'd be wise to assume it isn't the only one. Um, I want to thank the commissioners that have found this and encourage them to stay vigilant, identifying where else this might be occurring. On the flip of that, one area where it seems we are spending meaningful dollars and appropriately is the CJC effort. So really appreciated the presentation earlier, uh, really appreciate that effort. And it's proof that we can spend within compliance and on meaningful causes. So something that can be done. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, AJ. Do we have anyone else online?
Megan, I believe.
Okay, Megan. Do you want to speak at Citizens to Be Heard? I don't see anybody on the screen.
I know. I don't know why it's not showing.
Megan, do you hear us?
Yeah, I'm not sure why my screen's not working either, so I apologize. Um, my name is Megan Schaefer. I am speaking on behalf of supporting the CJC. Um, this, this is an extremely underutilized resource in our community and I had the unfortunate experience with my child last year of having to become involved with the CJC. And I truly, as a mother, I cannot say enough good things about everything that the CJC offered to us as resources, from the staff to the tools available to us, to everything in between. I, I honestly cannot say enough good things about the CJC. And I know that if we had that kind of experience, I'm sure there are so many other families in this community who agree. Um, I don't think that this is something that our community can afford to be skimpy on expenses and being able to offer the tools that the CJC needs to offer to continue to provide the support for our community that is absolutely necessary. I really don't have much. I just, I think this is something that is so important and we really need to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else online? Quinn, in the lobby, please come forward.
My name's Nate Whitney and I'm speaking here as a citizen on behalf of the CJC program. I do know from personal experience that the CJC program is necessary, absolutely for every community that they're a part of. I've heard various speakers throughout various levels of government talk about how utilized they are and the communities that don't have them, they have to travel to another community to utilize them because they are so needed. I really support whatever steps that this council will take in making our CJC program better than it currently is. And I do think that it needs to happen.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the chambers that'd like to speak? Okay, please.
My name is Eric Pratt. I'm currently a detective for the Moab Police Department and I'm here to speak about the CJC, um, support for the CJC. I'm one of the several detectives or former detectives in the room that's personally been in the room with the children we interviewed, conducting forensic interviews on these children. And multiple times I've been, and I've worked a few different agencies. I've been fortunate enough to experience CJC experiences around the state of Utah in different buildings and I, I can compare and contrast. And I have to say, I love Grand County. I love Moab City, but our CJC is like probably five that I've done interviews in is the one that is at the bottom of the barrel when it comes to the when you bring kids in and they've just been through something like tough, they are already going through so much. And so many times they're brought in by a parent who maybe doesn't even believe them or make things difficult for the family by telling, because the walls are so uninsulated. They're just, they're not sound resistant at all. They can just hear their, their guardian in the, in the foyer, just the sound of their voice, especially that guardians already kind of pressured them to maybe not participate or, or tell the truth or, or what have you. I've watched interviews go sideways. And these are the only chance you're going to get sometimes to have these kids tell you the truth. We need them to be in a place to feel safe and comfortable. And I, I really appreciate Andrea and the CJC here in Moab and the staff is here. I'm not saying the staff is bottom of the barrel. This is the greatest place. The building needs upgrading or, or we need a new building. I'm here, uh, just representing the police department and some of the law enforcement who knows this. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I want to ask one more online.
One more online. Do we have anybody that would like to speak at the six o'clock Citizens to Be Heard? All right. I think we're golden. We will move on to item number six on our agenda, which is the purchase of the Children's Justice Center location. And Stephen, I will let you present this. I would like to just comment real quick, you know, that I've never felt afraid up here, but I feel extremely safe today. So please take this one, Stephen, and we will, um, do you want Andrea to come up and be a part of this or is this?
I, I, I can lead off and if, if the commissioners have questions for Andrea, um, we can do that. Uh, I'm going to be honest, we, um, it's, it's wonderful to see the, the outs, uh, outflow of support. This is one of the few entities at the county. We don't have much of a fan club. Uh, people don't want to say they're associated with us because if they've been associated with us, it means something terrible has has gone wrong to a child. Um, we've, we've kind of glossed over in our discussions, but this is where we bring a child in and they get interviewed about some really terrible things that have happened to them. It's the same place where we do a physical rape exam on a child. And I think we, we lose sight of that. I know today we're here to talk about a building and we're, we're here to, um, look at it, but I really think the community doesn't really understand what the CJC is. And what it is, is it's a, a, a building, a facility, a location that's supposed to be trauma-informed to allow the children to be picked up and taken there. Um, the goal is to have a soft place for them and their family to talk before they either go in for a fit interview. And Detective Pratt is one of our, uh, fit interviewers where they utilize best practice techniques to ask the child about the circumstances in an unsuggestive way so that they can disclose fairly. And additionally, separate from that room, we have to have a monitoring room. That's a room that records that conversation and has law enforcement in another room that's observing that to make sure the interview is done well. And the reason why we want the interview to be done well, because in certain circumstances, I, as the prosecutor, can take that video and I can show that to the court if our victim's young enough. The importance of having a clean disclosure and a good disclosure is the difference sometimes between a child, um, well, actually the difference between a child's case being filed and them getting removed from a household where they're being sexually assaulted or not. Next, there's a medical exam room. There's a room where you have to physically conduct a child rape exam. And if you think that that doesn't happen in this community, it does. And the reason why it happens at the CJC is because it's a safe place, um, for that child to go through that exam. Additionally, of course, we've got Andrea. She needs an office place as well. And so, um, it's, it's critical that we have a good space and a safe place. The gift that the, the state is giving is, is an unheard of gift. It's $400,000 and is this expensive? Yes. Um, but as Commissioner McGann has, has reminded us, uh, the facility was back in the 19, I think it's 1998. And, and I appreciate Commissioner McGann's bravery at that time to help, um, to help really champion a, a CJC center. Because again, the fan club that we have, apart from today, which is wonderful output of support, it's really hard to support this thing. And on all the things you're going to cut first, it's going to be something like this. Uh, so it is a big ask. Um, we've seen over my tenure, uh, we've seen Andrea really turn around the CJC, really bring in some good numbers and have connections. And because of that, we've had, uh, trials that we've been successful. This year, we, we were successfully able to prosecute a child sodomy case, four counts and child kidnapping charge. These are the things that we need. Now, during this process, this has been four or five months of looking at different houses, looking at different ones that would meet the criteria, not meet the criteria. And is it a large house? It is. And is it a lot of house? It is. But for the need that we have, it's, it's the size that we need. Um, so I'm employing the commissioners and, and I'm asking the commissioners to strongly consider, um, supporting, uh, supporting this project. I'd call on Commissioner, um, McGann and Commissioner Hadeen to support this. They sit as our co-chairs on our CJC advisory board. And that's an important, critical board that really helps educate and support this community. And, and lastly, one thing I'll note, we look at these cases and often we're trying to calculate in dollars and figures the amount of a, a child rape. I, I don't know how we quantitate that into dollars. And the inability for us to prosecute a case, I don't know how we quantitate that into dollars. But since 1998, this has been a location that it's been, it's been very cost-effective to the county. And to selfishly brag, my office has been under budget, uh, to the tune of at least two to $300,000 in the past two years. Um, my office doesn't ask for a lot. Andrea doesn't ask for a lot. Uh, look at the presentation that she's prepared. She's gone out, sought private funding, gone to the state, asked for additional funding. We've done everything we can, uh, to try to make this project as cost-effective on the county. So I'm sorry for, uh, being a bit emotional today. Um, we had a sentencing on CJ, or a CCM case and the judge didn't, didn't give the appropriate amount of time, in my opinion, uh, but that's how court goes. Um, so I, I don't have anything else. If folks have questions for me, and I'm certain that Andrea could, uh, provide additional information as well. Thank you.
Okay, I want to go to Commissioner McCurdy and then Commissioner Martinez.
I don't mean to take up Andrea's time here, but I, I'd like to make the motion. I move to approve the purchase for real property located 2473 Vista Grand Drive, Moab, Utah, 84532. And more specifically described as parcel number zero two dash zero S B B dash zero zero two three.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner McCurdy, second by Commissioner. Motion by Commissioner McCurdy, seconded by Commissioner McCandless, discussion, Trish?
Yeah, so, um. This has been a long process and I, I wanna start with, I have been a school teacher since nineteen ninety-one, so for thirty-four years. I've worked with children and young adults. And so I am very aware of this need and supportive of this need. I do wanna describe the process that we went through. It was, they were coming to us with, with listings, it wasn't going very well and at a certain point, we decided that Bill and myself would be like a subcommittee. Because we had very different ideas as far as budget. And I figured with the two differences, we would somewhat come into like a mid-range. And we did, we actually made two offers, we made an offer on a home that was seven twenty-five, that's very close to this one. Um, and they countered at seven fifty, that would have saved us. Two eighty and what would be the current, what we're gonna have to contribute to the, very nice home. Large, one of the things Stephen pointed out was size, it would have fit the bill. Um, we, we also put a, another bid in on a house just right over here by the ball fields, which I thought was very, you know. Appropriate as far as, as, you know, location. And that was around seven hundred, so it would have saved a lot of money. Um. Bill went to a listing on his own and they made an offer without, I was out as far as the subcommittee, that's all good. My, where I sit is the money. And the extravagance of this specific home and I'm gonna really quickly read. Um, and I agree with, with, um, Officer Pratt on this idea of warm and welcoming and, and calm. And to me, a house that is opulent would provide that, that's just my opinion, I think it would be overkill. So I'm gonna read, if you have it, and, and the other issue I have is, none of this went into the packet as far as the listing or the fiscal. Impact until very late last night. And so to me, the general citizenry weren't really given the opportunity to look at this. Desert oasis with stunning views and modern upgrades, don't miss this opportunity, this beautiful updated home. Is in a quiet neighborhood, which is great, step outside to discover new LVP flooring, fresh paint, stylish trim, et cetera and so on. Enjoy evenings in the formal living room with a gas fireplace, gather in the great room, warmed by a pellet stove. The primary suite is a true retreat, featuring impressive walk-in closet. Luxurious bathroom with dual vanities and a walk-in shower with dual showerheads. Step outside into your private patio, relax in the hot tub and take in breathtaking views of the Red Rock. The exterior is just as impressive, boasting a new roof, gutters, windows and freshly painted stucco, which is great. Situated on a car lot over half acre, property offers covered partly imposed RV parking, full hookups, three patios, two storage sheds. And a fire pit ideal for entertaining under the stars. Oversized two-car garage provides ample storage and features the new, a new HVAC system, so again, I wanna reiterate. I am not at all opposed to purchasing a CJC. What I'm opposed to is the extravagance of this particular site. And I do think we could find a site that. We can reduce the budget load, I felt like I came up, I was in the half million dollar range. Um, I felt like I came up and never got any concession to coming down. Because, um, every site that was offered was right around a million dollars. And so that's where I sit. Um, so you know, when I vote and I vote against it, please know that I'm not voting against the CJC at all. I wouldn't be in a public education for over thirty years if I didn't support children and taking care of children. But I don't support this spend.
Mary, please.
This has been incredibly tough on me, I've met with, uh, and, you know, and Stephen and. I, I'm the one that's been bugging the state this week, asking a thousand questions and trying to figure out. Ways that, you know, maybe, you know, it was me to push the garage, if it's detached, can we use it for something else? You know, can we, you know, trying to figure out a way to justify the money. Um. My passion. CJC is huge. The fight that I went through to get it in the first place. We didn't have the support, thank you. Thank you so much, we didn't have the support. At all. In fact, we had a county attorney that opposed it. Well, thank you, Stephen. For being such an advocate. So my heart, more than anything in the world, wants to support this. But I feel a fiscal responsibility to our townspayers. And a half a million dollars is a lot of money, I've been saying a million, I think, but, uh. It's a lot of money. I mean, I had to fight to get a hundred thousand dollars put into affordable housing this last budget season. Even up here right now, I am torn. Incredibly torn. Because I want to have a wonderful place and I agree this place isn't. To the quality it should be. It needs improvement. And yet, and, and yet at the same time, I go. Wow, they're gonna. Spend half a million dollars when we're facing a fiscal cliff that Glenn Jackson just mentioned. When we could be hitting a recession. It's very tough. You thought the four votes. So my vote doesn't mean much. Uh, probably abstaining because. I could be on a debate team right now and I could take either side and win. I mean, it is a very tough decision for me. And I. That's enough.
Thank you, Mary, your passion, um, it's very clear that you're passionate about the CJC and I appreciate that. I, I do wanna speak to the financial aspect of this because it will be coming out of the capital. Fund that we have for things exactly like this, we've had Gabe look into it, we have. A substantial amount of money in there, I believe it's nearly seven million dollars, so the five hundred and eighty thousand that we have here is. Clearly affordable by the county for this purchase. I, I wanna also touch base on that financial. Discussion that Mr. Jackson had here in that cliff and it could be pointed to this very dais. That that's why we're in that fiscal issue that we're in right now with finances. We could look to the misuse of TRT funds, we could look to the lack of advertising. We can go all over the place, we can go back and forth, we can hear how. You have all of a sudden become very fiscally responsible now that we're in a decline and we also can listen to how. Commissioner Hadeen wants to talk over here about how this isn't fiscally responsible, we passed up better housing. Than this one a long time ago because we wanted to include Trish, we wanted her to be a part of this, we wanted her to see the need. And when you take a institution that needs a four-bedroom house and you keep showing them. All over town, two-bedroom houses and expecting them to figure out how to make it work. For seven hundred thousand dollars, when we go for nine hundred and eighty, we give what they need. Your logic doesn't add up, I'm sorry, it doesn't work. This has turned into a political issue and yes, I do hope that it passes, I think we've got to vote for it. But, but let's be honest with ourselves, the issue that we're in right here, it can be pointed to this dais. Financial issues that we have, which I'm getting off subject. I'm gonna go to Mike next and then I know Mary wants to speak, so I'll let her.
Mind if I hop in first? Go ahead, Mike.
Now, he did come first, I'm sorry, put his hand down, thank you.
I haven't spoken in everyone, I didn't have a chance. Yeah, thanks, you know, and, I mean, I, I just really wanna thank the people that have spoken today. Um, you know, it's, it's so hard to speak about these things and it's. I mean, it just, it, it, you know, I mean, Stephen teared up, I mean, I'm, I'm, I think everybody here understands the importance of this right here. Um, I really wanna thank the state, you know. The state went and found, they found the money for this, right? They went and found the money for this. You know, I mean, I'm gonna do everything that I can to make sure that I can find the money for this as well, you know? Um, you know, we were told that the, the, um, the location that we have is inadequate, right? We know that there are similar towns that have similar sized CJC all, all through Utah. Let's, let's join the crowd here, right? Let's go ahead and let's get this figured out. You know, I, I mean, I really wanna meet the needs and the services that we need to provide as a community here. That's all I got, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner McCurdy.
If I, uh, get emotional on the subject, also. It has also affected my family before. And fiscal cliff in, impending. Uh, and expected. Our kids in this community. Don't deserve to even care about the politics of this, the financial costs of this. We deserve, they deserve to be given the ve- best care. Uh, sorry about my wavering voice here, little heated. They deserve the best. Care that we can possibly provide. Every law enforcement in this room knows how I feel right now. They've had to see it just the same as I've had to see it one time, they've seen it far more. If they come up and support it, I can't imagine the anger at the politics of this that they are experiencing out there right now. I can only support Andrea in, and Stephen in this house. And I hope your numbers of service go down and they don't need to expand to its full capacity. But thank you for having more capacity, that's a horrible thing to say.
Commissioner McCandless, because she hasn't spoken and I'll go to you, Mary, I apologize.
No, don't apologize. Yeah, I, I've been supporting this since it first came to us and I think that. I'm really happy to see a house that is gonna fit and work. For the CJC, I went toward the CJC, the very first meeting that this came, um, about and I could easily see that it was not. Um. It wasn't, it wasn't the best place for that position anyways, we've had houses that we looked at, we've had other things, um, and if we don't take advantage of this one. It's gonna go and we're gonna be looking at the same thing, so in my opinion, we need to just. Get a great forever home for the CJC and go forward and then we have other things to talk about, um. The financial cliff would have been here two months ago or wherever it's gonna be, this is a. A purchase, a one-time purchase, it's not something that's gonna go on, it doesn't have a lot of, you know, pressure at the, um. That it doesn't need a lot of maintenance, we don't have to do a lot to this building to move right in, so it's something that we're gonna see very soon. I don't know if we do opening, uh, ribbon cuttings for things like that, but I, it'll, it'll happen really fast, so I'm really excited about this building. I'm excited we can make it happen and then, um, Andrea can go on with her job and we can go on ours.
Commissioner McGann.
What you said about having it coming out of the capital outlet helped me, so thank you for that. But I also wanna say the reason we have that money in capital outlet. And the reason we have a good. Bank of money to fall upon is because of the commissions in the past. When I got on this commission ten years ago, we did not have that kind of. Uh, well, you know, we didn't have that kind of fact, we, we were, you know, close and we had to make some tough decisions. Over the years, we budgeted fairly conservatively, we've come out every year being under budget. So I'm saying, uh. I take offense with having the finger pointed at me consistently saying that I'm the cause. Of the, uh, the problems we're facing financially. I'm also the cause that we have the money in the bank to make a half a million dollar purchase. It wouldn't be here if it hadn't been for the squirreling away of the money and, and Quinn's always doing it for years. Squirreling away for the money, wanting to have. A big thing so that we could deal with flood mitigation, so we could deal with this facility, so that we could deal with all that. And we knew we needed a strong bank account to do it. And so I would appreciate it if you could stop blaming me for the fact that. Things are looking a little tougher now than they have in the past.
Um, John, I'll get to you, but Mary, I'm not blaming you specifically, I'm blaming the entire previous leadership of this commission is who I'm blaming. Not just you, it's, it's.
We were part of, save the money.
Blame, that's a, that's a fun thing to participate in, Bill.
I'm aware of that.
Think there's. Plenty of reasons that we, that we may be facing a fiscal cliff and I think formal commissions are the least of them, but anyway. I haven't spoken yet, I, I think, uh, no one's against the CJC, absolutely, no, and just the fact that we're having this discussion, this. The fact that we have this outpouring from our community and from commissioners is honestly, I think, good for the CJC. It, it, it lets the greater public who may not even know that we have a CJC know that there's passionate support for it and that, um. And that, uh, that the community cares, uh, so this is one time that the CJC can be shown in, in a, in a positive light. And I definitely don't wanna throw any shade at CJC, I think it's hundred percent necessary, I, I have two young daughters myself. And luckily, we haven't had to use their services, but if we did, I'd be extremely happy that they're there. Ev- everybody wants to im- improve on the location that they're at now, of course, also. Um, I support a new building, this again to me is. Uh, this location is, it's a, it's a luxury listing, it's a little bit opulent, I've, I've been by the property and, and. You know, there's a jacuzzi, there's a detached garage, there's things that, that aren't necessarily needed here and the expense, when it. At the end of the day, the expense out of our. Um, capital fund is gonna be more than six hundred thousand dollars and, uh, we're really, really lucky to have the money from the state, that's great. It's this, um, luxury when, when looking for a place, um. And, uh, and, and, and thanks to the state for that. I also wanna point out that the general fund, as, as far as I know, Gabe, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but, but. The, um, the general fund and the capital fund, we can, we can move money from one to the other, is that, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
So taking money out of the capital fund essentially affects our bottom line of the general fund, I think, I think that's, um. Clear, uh, but I do wanna express my support for the CJC. I also want, we, we've been, so much of our discussion with this new commission has been discussing. Spending money and spending money out of budget, um, and, uh, it gets, it's too bad that it's coming up now, but. It is what it is and, um.
All right, I'm gonna call for a vote on this one, um, I would like to encourage commissioners to. Put aside the political part of this and let, let's vote on something here for CJC, put aside our personal differences. And let's get the CJC in here and let them go away from here feeling proud for what we've got, but again, I'm gonna call for a vote, those in favor of Mike's motion and. Commissioner McCandless is second to approve this purchase, all in favor. Those opposed?
I'll abstain.
So the motion passes, one abstaining, six in favor. We will move on to the next item, thank you folks for your time. And so I am going to move on to number seven, appoint a point of contact and backup for the POC. The point of contact for the Dolores Triangle MOU with the BLM, Commissioner McCurdy.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint point of contact. Uh, Commissioner Winfield and backup POC for the Dolores Triangle being backup POC being. Uh, Commissioner Martinez. Uh, for the Dolores Triangle MOU with the BLM.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner McCurdy, seconded by Commissioner McCandless, discussion. Doc?
Um, I think, uh, we have, we have a, we have two public lands. Um, I think, uh, we have, we have a, we have two public lands, um, uh, liaisons. And those are Brian and Trish, and they also represent, uh, two ideological sides of the commission. And I would, um, propose that they be made joint uh, point of contacts, and if not that, then, uh, knowing that Brian's on the majority of the ideological rift, as we say, I would propose he be, uh, appointed the point of contact with the backup being Trish.
Just discussion.
It's, um, the motion was already made. I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there.
Okay, um, I believe Commissioner Hadeen was an X, and Commissioner McCurdy.
No, I was gonna say something similar. I mean, we all decided as a body at the beginning in January to appoint appointments to a variety of boards and, and, and/or liaisons, and Brian and I were appointed as the federal, uh, land management agency liaisons, and it, to me, it makes sense to have us too. And I do agree, I think that we aren't, I mean, I actually have never gone to lunch with you or anything, so I don't really know what you think, but, um, I do think we bring a diverse perspective. I know in the, the last meeting that we were in regarding Dolores Triangle, I think we brought a diverse perspective. And so I think that's really important.
Commissioner McCurdy. Honestly, I would have wavered on, and, and, but, uh, you and Commissioner, uh, Martinez on that. Uh, but for not being in attendance for a few of the Dor- the Dolores Triangle, uh, meetings. Uh, and the actual hands-on, both hands-on knowledge and generational knowledge, not the year old, I can say that. Uh, that Bill provides of the exact area, I, I there's, there, there was no one in my mind, and I would not want that, and comparatively speaking. Uh, I have knowledge of the area also, but, yeah, I mean, since he was in diverse, uh, that area. And that is a heavy emphasis, uh, to being a point of contact out there, is having ground, a boots-on-ground knowledge, so. But it, it's, it wasn't political areas. I, I would like to vote myself for points of contact, but.
What about, what about the idea of Bill being the point of contact and then we're kinda co-points? So that we have, if Brian can't attend, I can attend, or whatever, if they're, the BLM needs us in, in some capacity.
I think that one hundred percent can, uh, one hundred percent can be talked about between you two, oh, rock it off.
Well, this is an MOU.
But for continuing the MOU, I made that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Hadler, did you wanna weigh in again?
Um, no, I was, I was, actually, I was just gonna point out that, uh, that I would, I'd be fine with, with Bill and Trish. I do think, uh, in the last commission, there was a five-two split, and we, I think we did a very, uh, equitable job of splitting up the, a, uh, most of the committee assignments, even, even though it was a, it was a bigger, um, gap there. And I think out of respect to that, I would be more comfortable with, uh, a situation where maybe Bill was the point of contact and Trish was the backup. But, uh, again, I also don't think this is the end-all-be-all assignment either, so.
Yeah, I mean, I just said that. I don't really care. I mean, I guess the point was trying to make a point that we guys, we do appoint these boards and these liaisons, and we do that in January, and I think there should be respect for that process.
I, I think there is respect for it. I will say that Commissioner Walker and I have been on that Dolores Triangle. And of course, I feel like I should continue on on that, just on that basis alone, let alone the fact that, of where I've been there. And Commissioner Martinez brings something to this board on public lands that none of us have as far as, uh, recognition and experience and just a professionalism, and I don't see any reason to move away from the motion that is made.
Can I hear the motion? I'm sorry.
Um, Commissioner McCurdy made the motion to make Commissioner Winfield the point of contact on the Dolores Triangle MOU, and Commissioner McCandless as the second, and
Oh, I seconded, yeah.
Commissioner Martinez, my bad. There's a lot of Ms. in this room.
Yeah, okay. Is it, and without a second?
Yes, there was a second, yes. And Commissioner Hadler?
Oh, I just think it's offensive that you're, that you say Brian brings something to the table that none of us else do. I think, I think we each bring something to the table. I've spent years as an outfitter on these lands and Trish has a PhD in, in public lands management. I mean, I mean, I, I think Mary's lived here her entire life, as has Mike and Melody, like, that's what.
It wasn't meant to insult anybody, Ja.
Well, I took it that way, bro.
I, I didn't mean for it to be. He does have a extensive background in public lands himself, and that has a value, so. I'm not discounting anyone else's value over that or under it. Yes, Mike?
Oh, no, 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 wait, call for a vote?
Okay, let's, Mary.
Yes, uh, I, I do think many of, most of us have a huge amount of experience and, and thoughts and, uh, with public lands. And I do think that we each come with our own set of, uh, criteria or values that we have that we, we hold dear, you know, like mine with, uh, wilderness and protecting the land. And other people come with the value that we need to get the resources we can to make our lives better for everyone. And who's to say? Somebody maybe somewhere else knows whose values are the right values. But I think on a, on a, on a board like this, it would be better to have people who have different come from different values system and different ways of looking at it. And, uh, so, uh, in my opinion, the person who has been working the closest with our land agency and such have been Trish and my, uh, Brian. Because they're, they're our liaisons and the ones that have been doing it, so I would like to, I, I, I think it would be better to have uh, different, different ways of thinking, different approaches on that, on that, uh, on that board or appointed to that contact as opposed to people that are pretty much aligned.
Commissioner Martinez.
Yeah, I've been involved in all of the, the, the meetings, and Trish, you've missed a couple as well.
I know, I realize that. I mean, I think y'all know we have many, many, many obligations, but, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just, just wanna make this out, right? All three of us are involved in this. This is as simple as, who is the point of contact? I think that we're going way down into the weeds right here over something that should be a simple vote. Can I call for a vote?
Please, all those in favor of Commissioner McCurdy's motion and Commissioner Martinez's second. Four in favor, those opposed? Commissioner Hadeen, Commissioner Hadler, Commissioner McGann oppose. The motion passes four to three. We will move on to the ranking and approval of the CIB list.
Or no, we have a raid building workshop.
Do I have?
My number eight.
I'm sorry, I was looking at number eight, and I must have an old list, excuse me. Okay, so number eight on the agenda for the county is schedule a commission budget workshop to discuss funding shortfalls, TRT compliant and unplanned expenses in the twenty twenty-five budget, and I believe that this is like auditor boy tech.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so after attending the Moab Tourism Advisory Board and Commission Workshop last week, I was prompted to analyze and confirm the proper use of transient room tax revenues, which are qualified to be used for establishing and promoting recreation film and conventions. And so going back to the final and accepted state auditor's findings dated on December second, twenty twenty-four, and those accepted findings called for reimbursement of promotion funds in the amount of one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars to make up for support of trail ambassador salaries, which the state auditor's office deemed unallowable. Uh, and going back over the records of accounting reports that I provided to the state auditor's office, uh, during the audit, uh, that took place last year, I was able to clearly determine on those reports that the expenses on those reports, uh, of, of a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, that amount, that exact amount um, were reimbursed, um, from funds that were originated or designated for TRT rec- recreation film convention. So this, uh, this means that myself and this body carried a misunderstanding into the new budget year regarding what the state auditor ruled on the use of these particular revenues. Uh, I'm, um, I wanna make very clear that I'm upset and disappointed that this misunderstanding persisted. And I agree with comment that the op- optics look terrible. Um, I apologize to the taxpayers and all relevant stakeholders for my part in this misunderstanding. At this point, it is important that we take formal action in correcting the error in order to achieve compliance. And so I, I, um, you know, upon sort of making this discovery, uh, very late last week, um, you know, and getting this onto the agenda because, due to the urgent, urgent nature of, of this situation, um, I'm proposing at this time that we, uh, hold a budget workshop, uh, where we, whereby we discuss the, the urgent need to be in compliance. And at this workshop, I would also propose to discuss a number of unplanned expenses that have come up in twenty twenty-five, uh, including action needed to make up for revenue shortfalls as it relates to TRT mitigation, which, which will be discussed by Commissioner Martinez later in the meeting. And agreement be made by the Commission on Action Steps for Compliance and General Budgeting Moving Forward. Um, I would also propose that the goal of the budget workshop to be to initiate a formal budget amendment process for that would take place over subsequent commission meetings. And that also, that Grand County requests that the state auditor's office vet any part of the proposed budget amendments that are associated with uses of transient room tax revenues, just so that we can have full confidence in compliance moving forward. That's all I got, thank you.
Commissioner Martinez.
Yeah, thanks, Gabe, for that. Um, I compared a little bit of a timeline to kinda go through this, and, and in my experience looking through this. And I just wanted to kinda read this and share a couple of things that I, that happens. Um, so when I, when I looked at this back in October, the county acknowledged and knew that our expenses had exceeded our, our projected revenues. Um, and it was also clear at that time that the state auditor did not consider TRT in a, uh, uh, an allowable funding source for the trail ambassador activity. So my first question is, is why did we continue to spend money that we didn't have, right? Why did we not bring this up then? Um, during the December seventeenth commission meeting, the commission passed the budget five to two with Winfield stating, or Commissioner Winfield stating that so many things in this budget are a problem. And he was curious if they meet statute. He re- he recommended we open the budget up next year. Um, county auditor Wojtek denied my initial request to include copies of Fund twenty-three and forty-seven to this agenda. But I did print some out for everybody here. You guys will have to look, thanks. That one, who passes yet? I'm sorry that, that the public doesn't have access to this, but, um, if you look there, you can look at Fund twenty-three contributions right there, and there's a zero that's listed for trail ambassadors. Um, but if you look down, just down below it, you will see that there's five hundred and twenty-six thousand in respons- responsible recreation. When I initially asked Commissioner Hadler to bring county, uh, uh, auditor Wojtek about this at the first audit meeting, audit committee, audit committee meeting, I was told that these were for, uh, water bottles and stickers. I was assured by the county auditor and that we were compliant. Commissioner Hadler stated he was deeply involved in framing the GTAP budget. I trusted the county auditor, Wojtek, and Commissioner Hadler had mastery over this legislation because they were both directly involved in negotiations with the state auditors. State auditor finding number three was that this office still does not share the county's view that trail ambassador activities, such as providing water, collecting trash, and encouraging tourists to stay on constitute promotion. The county must restore, as Gabe just said, um, the cost for trail ambassador activities, the promotion fund for one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Right? The minutes at the December sixth commission meeting state the commission agreed the county auditor would draft a response letter agreeing to the changes presented in the findings. Commissioner Hadeen motioned to accept the findings of the letter and conduct further communication that, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hadeen, I'm gonna get the exact motion here, motion to authorize the county auditor to implement the proposed changes in the state auditor's finding letter and conduct further communication confirming compliance with the findings. The commission here voted unanimously to accept the state auditor's findings. So I expect this entire body to be as concerned as I am about this, that we are out of compliance. Right? Following the audit, Grand County has made no changes to how it is funding trail ambassador activities regarding promotional TRT. Commissioner Hadler and clerk auditor should have known fun, uh, funding trail ambassadors from the same account was not allowed. I repeatedly asked if trail ambassador activities were being funded from promotional TRT, and both told me Grand County is compliant, and that is, quote, "the definitive answer." Right? I wonder who clerk auditor, uh, the clerk auditor consulted with to provide this definitive answer because I clearly do not think that you can refer to state auditor nor to county attorney. So who did he consult? The director of GTAP, county, county, uh, county auditor Wojtek, and the commissioner and Commissioner Hadler were asked directly at last Tuesday's TRT workshop if TRT funding for trail, uh, uh, if we were funding trail ambassadors with TRT, and none of them were prepared to give a straight answer. Their responses were misleading for the Moab Travel Advisory Board, for the public, and myself, if you watch their responses. This non-compliance further jeopardizes future essential funding, uh, grant funding for essential services. I asked the county attorney Wojtek for transparency on this item, and that request was denied. I spoke out over the weekend as I refused to minimize, minimize the situation. No commissioner should have to push as hard as I did for months, get a straight answer about compliance from the county auditor. Thanks.
Commissioner Hadler. So Reid, is this taking place of the discussion later? It seems like it is, is that correct?
No, the discussion is, is different. This right here is about the compliance issue.
It's about setting up a time, so.
Uh, I thought I saw on their, uh, TRT compliance is on it as well.
I'll keep the floor, anyway, um, thank you. Uh, I mean, the aud- the auditor's finding didn't come out until right before the first meeting in December, as far as that budgeting went. We were in negotiations with them. I was in negotiations with that. Uh, I mean, the truth of the matter is we reached an agreement with them, and then a commissioner happened to, that, that excluded this finding three, and one of our former commissioners, uh, talked to the press, and suddenly the deal was off. Um, but, but that is what it is also. Um, as far as the compliance goes, promotional, i- if you look, go back and look at those meetings, which I did, all talk of that TRT money was promotional and rec. And we, we, we divided out the difference between the one-fifth of promotional TRT that was spent for rec convention and film from the strict promotional portion. And when I was talking about promotional, I have always meant the eighty percent promotional, not the, not the rec film convention promotional. Um, this was in no way intentional. It was a result of confusion in the clerk's office and in the commission in the wake of an audit um, that, that lasted for a really long time, and, uh, we didn't have clarity on that up through the budgeting season, um. If you look at the first meeting in December, uh, it's apparent that none of us realized uh, or interpreted the findings of the auditor to include rec film and convention. Um, at minute fifty-five in that meeting, uh, during the discussion, when we're discussing finding three, which is the relevant one here, that, that, um, we're talking about, uh, not one of us questioned Gabe on the interpretation of the finding. Uh, none of the seven commissioners, including, uh, all five of us present here, um, had inkling that the interpretation was incorrect. Uh, a minute later, Kevin brought up the tourism promotion and, uh, rec film and convention as different, uh, pots of money. And again, no one, no one, no one questioned that. It was just, it was, we we, that was, that was presented as how it is, and it just, and it just carried. Um, that could have been, uh, addressed at that time, and it wasn't. It was assumed that the, that the pots were different. And if you look back and read that auditor's finding, it's extremely confusing. If I, I just read it the other day and it still sounds like rec film and convention is different from that promotion. Um, about six hours in, about five hours and forty-seven minutes in, during our, uh, budget action item at that same meeting, Gabe, Gabe, uh, clearly discussed the hundred and twenty-one thousand, uh, promotion when he was prompted from a question by Brittany Melton during the, um, during the public hearing on that. And at five fifty, uh, Gabe talked about the rec film and convention. He stated that there was no disagreement with using this money. And again, there's no argument from anybody. Bill didn't make an argument, Mike didn't make an argument. And again, there's no argument from anybody. Bill didn't make an argument. Mike didn't make an argument. I didn't make an argument. No one wrote a letter to us to make an argument. You didn't make an argument about that at that time. This all happened in the late day. This all happened. During meetings that everybody was privy to, anyone could have made comment at. And it was, um, it, it was discussed openly and that, that interpretation. Carried until the other day. Uh, if you watch the December seventeenth meeting that you referenced where Mike and Bill, Bill voted against the budget, if you look at that discussion, there's about fifteen minutes. Of discussion where Bill airs grievances. And he talks about, um, he talks about the airport, he talks about economic development, he talks about film. He didn't bring up one time in that, in that, I think it was like ten or twelve minutes that Bill talked. About using the rec film and convention money for this program. It just, it just didn't happen. We, we. Were all under the working assumption that that, those two pots of money. Were different and I'm not, I'm still not convinced that they, they are different. I'll, I'll go along with Gabe's interpretation for sure. Um, but there was, there was no intentional untoward behavior regarding that at all. I, I assure you. Whatever, uh. I'll, I'll give someone else the floor. I have more to say, but.
Yeah, no, you go if you want. You did a great job.
Commissioner McCurdy.
Uh, seeing that it's on our agenda here, uh. Am I? I want to schedule a meeting. Do I make the motion or is, is it okay to make a motion to schedule a meeting?
It is.
Done. I'd like to, I'd like to make the motion to schedule a commission budget workshop to discuss funding shortfalls. TRT compliance and unplanned expenses in the twenty twenty-five budget. On. May twenty-seventh. At an appropriate time matching everyone's schedule that day. Best is able on the twenty-seventh.
I'll second that.
Oh, I can do.
Motion by Commissioner McCurdy, seconded by Commissioner Hadler. We will go to discussion. Commissioner Hadeen was first.
Want to discuss a time real quick?
A time, yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to discuss with the time.
It's coming up pretty quick, so. Um, yeah, I get you. Do you want to do one? Two, do you want to do the afternoon?
Open.
Date are we looking at again?
Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, one week from today.
So, um, I, I would like it in the morning. I, I'm supposed to, I mean, I have an, uh, uh, engagement. In South Lake.
Early works for me.
Made a long time ago. I can't come in the afternoon.
Okay, that's fine. I would have to just move some stuff, but I can.
What's early? Morning, morning works.
I, I would start as early as possible. I'd start at eight, eight-thirty. You know, and get eight-thirty for you, cause it's hard for you. I'd like to start early and then have a timeframe where, cause. It, this could go on eight hours.
What time works for you, Commissioner?
Oh, in morning? Yes, that's fine.
My, what time works? Morning is fine with you?
Oh, we're gonna need morning. This is a discussion point to my motion is what I want to make.
Okay, but let's make sure on a time here.
Okay.
Early works for you two as well.
Sure does.
Okay, so his motion. For a workshop on May twenty-seventh and we can start that early, eight-thirty, Mary has suggested. We can put that together, admin. And we, and so did we have a second to your motion? Yes, we did, Commissioner Hadler. And so then, yes, your discussion now, Commissioner McCurdy.
We need to sit down and work through this. We can't stand up mid-meeting and leave the building. I understand the business. Please lay out what. In writing or an email, what you, you want to include if you have to leave, if you have to go aside, it's understanding, but we. It work, work, work. It should have been done last year. We need to do this and get it done.
Okay, Commissioner.
I don't know. I thought if we went from eight-fifth, eight-thirty, nine-thirty, ten-thirty, eleven-thirty. If we could get done that, uh, by, uh. The latest twelve-thirty, that would be great. For me. You know, and that's a long time. That's almost overkill. Cause I think if three hours were going enough, three hours.
Next enough, but. Okay, I'd like to set a three-hour time limit. I think that that's the way that we should look at that. I mean, if we can't figure it out between this. Have to postpone to a second meeting in my mind.
Eight thirty to eleven-thirty?
Eight thirty to eleven-thirty. And so is there any further discussion? Steven, please, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
That's okay. Just, just a reminder for everyone, Monday's Memorial Day. And so whatever you guys want on the packet. Or information you want for staff, you guys have to inform them like ASAP. Uh, because it puts a big push on them. And if you're gonna do it eight AM. On the first day following a holiday, just noting all that, just because staff hasn't pointed that out. So I'll do it for everybody else.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Oh, I'll tell us. Just confirming eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, that's all.
Okay. Oh, yeah. All in favor, May twenty-seventh to eight-thirty AM. Motion passes unanimously. Let me move on to the next item. If I can get the correct sheet here. Number nine, ranking and approval of the CIV, the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six CIV list. And. We have someone who is going to present that. I, I believe that this has all been done. The commissioners have all weighed in on it, although I think Dana mentioned we were missing one or did we finally?
I was that one. I got it in.
Okay, so we, we got all that in? Yes, Commissioner McCandless.
So I just want to make a motion to approve the CIV list as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner McCandless, seconded by Commissioner Martinez. Any discussion? All in favor of the CIV list as presented, passes. Six with Commissioner Hadler absent.
And thank you, Dana, for getting us that survey and that was great.
It was hard. No, I believe, I believe it was hard. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Wow, we got through one fast.
We will move on to number ten, a letter to legislators regarding the sale of public lands. Commissioner Hadeen is presenting.
Yeah, so that, that letter is in the packet. Um, I'll just do a quick thing. So, um, the sale, so on May sixth, the natural resource committee advanced the last minute. Amendment to the budget reconciliation bill authorizing the sale of public lands in Weetson, Nevada. Possible sale will be up to a half a million acres. It will be the largest single sale of public lands in modern history. As the letter points out, the federal land transaction facilitation act of two thousand allows for the sale of public lands with caveats. Those include ample public feedback and the, and proceeds must be reinvested into either existing. Public lands restoration, for example, and or purchasing other public lands. This amendment. Does not do that violates this act. Um, a recent survey by the trust for public lands reflected that seventy-one percent opposed the sale of public lands. Basically what we're looking at is short-term gains for the lots of generations of recreational opportunity, hunting and fishing opportunities, loss of watershed management, loss of lands for renewable energy generation, loss of lands for gas, oil, coal. And mineral extraction, loss of lands for grazing and loss of lands for timber production. And as you may know, I come from a timber fan. And so to me, a very short sighted look at public lands and the resources that it can provide for its citizenry. Public lands ensure our people, that is all of us, and, um. Public lands are, serve our people and are integral to our communities' economic, physical and mental wellbeing. Our county's legislators, um. Sorry, our country's legislators in the creation of public lands prioritize, prioritize long-term interests. And investments. And I'll kind of like, just be a little gooey for a second. Lastly, I want to highlight, um, Teddy Roosevelt. He's the leader of the Republican Party and known as the conservation president. He protected approximately two hundred and thirty million acres during his presidency, which includes one hundred and fifty national forests, fifty-one federal. Bird reserves, four national game reserves, five national parks and eighteen monuments. And this is a quote from him, "The greatest good for the greatest number applies to the number within the womb. Our duty is the whole, including the unborn generations." Um, it bids us that we re. Re, uh, sorry, um, bids us. Retain an unprincipled present-day minority from wasting the heritage of generations to come. The movement for the conservation of wildlife and all of the natural resources. Are essentially democratic in spirit and are purpose and amended. And so that's why I wrote this letter. It's in your packet. It just asks that our, um, that our senators and representative, our congressmen. Um, look at the long-term, you know. Conservation of our public lands for us. That's about all I have to say.
Commissioner McCurdy.
And I wrote it without a hide, Mike.
Can I make a motion and a discussion point, uh, two for here? Uh, just know if there's someone. If there's, if there's a second.
Then we'll go into discussion. Thank you.
Uh, I move to. Not accept the letter to Senator Lee Curtis, Representative Mike Kennedy as written.
We have a second.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner McCurdy, seconded by Commissioner Martinez. Discussion, Commissioner McCurdy.
You mean to take the first spot here? But, uh. I, I didn't want to tell San Juan County what to do and they touch us. I, I really don't want to tell. Nevada and. Uh, part of Washington County or the tribe what to do. Uh, that's, that's not, not my purview, Grand County, our purview.
Commissioner Hadeen.
So I do want to outline that folks, I sent this letter out over a week ago. Asked for comments. I try to always do that so that people can give their input, meaning the other commissioners. And I'm more than happy to manipulate letters as they see fit. I got no comments, zero. This, I think we need to understand that public lands are all of us. The public lands in San Juan County are mine. The public lands in Washington County are mine. They're public lands. They belong to all of us. So I'm not telling anybody from another county what to do or not do. There are public lands. And you do need to know there is opposition from a wide variety of people regarding. Motorized recreation, non-motorized hunters, fishers. I'm a big, you know, hunter and angler. I'm part of backcountry hunters and anglers. They are adamantly opposed to the selling of our public lands. To the, you know, the dissolving of our public land. So I don't feel at all like I'm telling somebody else what to do. They're ours. You know, and so, and, and again, I guess I'm a little bothered by. That it's in contention now when I do put it out to commissioners and ask for, for comment. And I am more than willing to manipulate verbiage in my letters.
Commissioner, how do you?
Uh, I fully support the letter. I think it's nicely written and I, um, I. Our public lands are literally invaluable and selling them implies that they. They have some monetary value beyond what, what. They are, they're, they're, the reason we're all here, literally, they're. They're the backbone of our economy. I think the thought of selling off our public lands is insane and I hope you support this letter.
Mike, I'm gonna let it go around the room first, if that's okay, um.
Can you have your hand up?
Sure, first, maybe. Let's go around.
Uh, public lands were established by, uh, Thomas Jefferson. I mean, they've been around for a long, long time. Bigger than all of us around here. And, and they. You know, and they serve a purpose there. We all own them. And, uh, you know, they did the homestead act with them. They've done a whole bunch of stuff in the past. I mean, if you haven't. Watched presentation by Walt Dabney that gives you all the history of the public lands. You need to do that. States that don't have public lands envy the states that do. Especially people who like to hunt, who like to fish, who like to, uh, run rivers, who like to, uh. You know, uh, recreate or, or use the land for grazing. Or for, you know, and. And if, if, uh, if the land is sold. That's when you lose access. The access we've lost over here that we're doing that huge study to find out. Uh, why or to, into milk creek. That's because it's private land. You know, rarely, rarely. And then it has to go through a lengthy process. To, to cut off any, uh, public land to any people. I mean, it's a big deal. And they can't do it just casually and just say, oh, I'm gonna put up a no trespassing sign and you can't come in here. It's, it's a big deal. Uh. I think, and there is a way for us to get land for housing. It's in the statutes. You can call, uh, the heads of, of the BLM and find out how the process. Uh, Saint George. A huge swath of Saint George is built on what used to be public lands. And they worked with the Bureau of Land Management. And, and got permission to build houses and build various things on their, the public land. Needed over to the city or the county, both. You know, that Saint George is now sitting on. We can, as a county. We've done it in the past. We've gotten our, uh. Our, uh. Arena. Is public lands. Our, our cemetery is public lands. We have a mechanism. In place. To enable us to get some public lands to build housing. Build another school. You know, it usually comes with some type of thing. Well, it has to always be used for this or something of that nature. So. I think the sale of public lands. When they're saying, oh, it's for housing or it's for this or for that. That, that's not true because we have the means to get public lands to use for many things. And we've done it and hopefully we're to be able to do it with the Umtre project. And, uh. And the sale of it, you know, talk to people from Texas. How much does it cost them to go on a hunting trip? Uh, one of our, uh, our locals, a great nun. Goes to Texas and makes huge amounts of money. Guiding. People who pay a thousand to two thousand or more to go hunting. In Texas. And then the private landowner owns it. And he gets that money. I mean, I think it's so short sighted. To even think about letting go. Of this small percent of land in our. Nation that is still public and open. For everyone to use.
Commissioner Martinez. Thanks. Yeah, just, just a couple of points right there. So, you know, we, we. We're, we're here talking about, you know, and Mary just mentioned, you know, it's the envy of people in the east that we have so much land out here in the west. Yet we're over here in the west trying to figure out how that we as a small county can actually support and hold up these federal lands. Right? So over there, they're saying that, that, that they envy us and over here we're saying, wow, we have so much. Um, we're talking about, you know, essential services like providing EMS, providing, you know, um. Search and rescue for these public lands, servicing these public lands is part of our duty out here that we're not being supported by people on the east. Um. Access. I mean, I don't know if you guys have, has anybody read this bill? So there is no, there is no stopping access to anything. This bill right here, from what I read, is for pieces of property that are connected to existing infrastructure. There is no infra, or there is no. Uh, um, feasible land inside of Grand County that would apply for this. Right? We don't, we're not even on the table for this. This is not a worry for Grand County. Telling, hold on, Trace, can I, can I, I know you just want to get in and start going at it, but give me just a second to finish. I, I've always been polite. I'll let you finish even when I disagree with you. So just give me just a second, right? Cause I, I, I agree with you. I mean, I love our public lands. I love some of the most weird and obscure places that some people would probably say that there's no value. I mean, I go to these places and I'm like, this is a cute little spot for just this purpose and it's just for me. So I agree with you on the love of our public lands. I think that everybody here on this dais loves our public lands. But this is something different. This is something that Washington County and places in Nevada are looking for ways. They can use, use these public lands to hook up to, uh, 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 um, existing infrastructures. I think that Mary, as you were saying, this is part of that mechanism right there. And without having a full knowledge, right, of what we're actually talking about. I definitely don't want to go up to our congressional, to our congressional staff. And start saying that we are completely opposed to this without having firm ground on what we're actually talking about.
Commissioner McCandless.
Again, I, I just sat and read your letter multiple times and tried to figure out how I was going to give you certain insights of how I was wanting.
figure out how I was going to give you certain insights of how I was wanting to change. And ultimately I was like, didn't believe that it would get changed to the way that I would vote for it. So I just chose to not say anything. I mean, I kind of pulled down a little more, I guess, on the email. But just like we all, it's like Ryan said, we all love our public lands. And in this community especially, we have these really amazing public plans, but we also have public lands that could be used by our community. They could be used for housing, for infrastructure, you know. Senator Lee's working on the Houses Bill and he's actually asked us to give him a letter in support of the Houses Bill. We haven't brought that on the, you know, up here for us to debate about that, but sending a letter to him in the exact opposite would be telling him no way, we're not going to send a letter in support of your Houses Bill. So the persons in Utah make up only a third of one percent, so point zero three percent of public lands in the state. And those are down in Washington County. And they'd be used to expand their airport or economic development and those would go to this, to the city. So it's not like they're selling this off to anybody. And so that's really why I, I don't support this letter. It's not the idea behind the letter. It's just that we need to have our support from Senator Lee and a lot of things that we need to accomplish and being directly in opposition to what they're trying to accomplish doesn't, doesn't get us anything. So I, like I said, I, I read your letter a lot. I wanted to be able to comment that would change to where we could all agree, but I just don't know that there was anything I could put in there that would make that happen.
Mike, I'm gonna wait in for just a minute and then I think Trish wanted to.
No, I'm good.
But, you know, I looked the letter over as well, Trish. I look at it a little bit different than the rest of them do. We're currently asking Senator Lee to support Umtre transfer to Grand County. The bill that Curtis is running, and I don't see how that works. I've never really seen how you can ask somebody for something on one hand and slap them with the other hand. And so I, I see this as, it's such a it has no bearing on Grand County at this point. Why would we weigh in on something that could jeopardize a very important bill to everybody here, the both the county and the city? And, and on a whole different note, you know, you, you do bring these letters forward regularly and we have, have supported many of them. But I do remember a letter that was brought forward that you were allowed to work on and you thanked another commissioner for letting you change his letter, but you still weren't going to support it. So there's, there is that. I mean, there's a little bit of, let's work with people, but as it stands, your letter would be almost an insult to somebody who we're expecting an awful lot from. And for me, that's the main reason I don't support it. So Mike, please.
My points are trivial. Me and emails, we don't see eye to eye, so I tried to call you. And talk about these subjects, just, we didn't contact. I just want to let you know on that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
In this, again, I, I did read through the bill and it is different than Senator Lee's bill. With the Housing Act. But it has nothing to do nor will imply inside Grand County. Or the foreseeable future. So again, that's where I drew my point of trying to butt into another, it seems on such that another county and another state. And I don't want to pull I don't want to pull any political support off of Lee and Curtis. That was a great point that Commissioner wouldn't. I, I, I want to work on the stuff that affects my constituents in Grand County directly. I want to work on that 100% and I don't want to pull any political work that would have to go into something else away from the Umtre Transfer Project.
Can I call for a vote or do we have more?
No, just, just, I got, I got two seconds.
Okay, please.
Yeah, yeah, two seconds. You know, yeah, I, I, I really do agree with that. It does seem odd that here we are on one hand, asking for a conveyance of federal land to the county. And then on the other hand, we're saying that we don't want this to happen. And that's all that I have to say for that vote.
All right, let's call for a vote. Those in favor of, what was the motion again? Could somebody remind me? The motion was to deny the letter. Okay, so those in favor of denying the letter to Senator Lee regarding the sale of public lands. Those opposed. The motion passes with three against Commissioner Hadeen, Commissioner Hadler and Commissioner McGann.
One of that, one of four, three votes.
You missed, you missed the couple that we had. All four.
The one?
Yeah.
Okay, so moving on, we are at item, and I don't list, but we are talking about the approval of the letter of support to UDOT for enhanced high visibility crosswalks along Highway 191 and Commissioner Hadler, this, take it away.
Yeah, this came out of a, there's a presentation at Trail Mix Meeting recently about this where it was discussed that many of these crosswalks are, the paint's fading on them or you can't even see it when you're coming up onto the, the crosswalks at a, at, at any kind of speed really. And so this is just asking UDOT to to enhance the visibility of those crosswalks. And there are some specific and well thought out crosswalks on 191. There are things that, that have had incidents in the past, including a couple of pedestrians that killed and also ones that are necessary to continue to create a robust non-motorized transportation infrastructure in town. So Trail Mix voted unanimously to support the effort and that's why I brought it to the commission.
So we're, Commissioner McCandless, I believe, was first. And then Commissioner McCurdy.
Why did you get a second? It's okay.
The only thing, I, I was gonna send you an email and, and recommend this, if we're gonna send a UDOT letter and especially being based upon the accidents that we have and the fatalities. And just being safe, safe and being able to get around our community a lot better. As I was reading that before, it'd be really great to add in left-hand turn signals into this letter. That I, I, I I think that's super important. I know that I've been told that that's not going to happen, but I think we gotta keep asking.
I, I mean, I think that deserves even its own letter.
Yeah, I think that is based separately.
For sure. No, I'm not arguing with it at all. No, I think that's, that's great that this left-hand turns weren't talked about in that particular meeting. And like I said, it just came out of a committee meeting. So that's the result of it, but, but I'm certainly not against left-hand turn signals and I, I'd be supportive of a letter if you cared to draft one, put it on the next agenda.
Commissioner McCurdy.
I'd like to make a motion to, for approval of the letter of support for Utah Enhanced Visibility Crosswalks along with left turn signals on Highway 191.
So are you, you're suggesting then that Jacque change his letter somewhat?
Yeah, that.
I, I did put the email or the letter out there also for a little bit. It's, I'm sure it can still be amended if we want to.
Following this small amendment.
Commissioner McCurdy makes the motion to accept it with modifications regarding left-hand turn signals, the second by Commissioner Martinez.
Any, any chance for discussion?
Yes.
Perfect, yeah. Either which way, yeah, he did a good job with that letter. I think it's, it's really good. I remember when Kevin gave his presentation over there at the library. You know, this was one of the this is one of the projects that, that can be done very cheaply and have great effect. So I, I, I do agree that it's, that it's important that we do this. But to Commissioner McCandless's request, I think that this, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. Right? And if we keep asking for these left-hand turn signals, maybe we will eventually. Maybe one recommendation is, is, is that we just talk about a short window for those, you know, because I think the problem is, is they figure that it's going to slow traffic down. But even if we had on a couple of our streets, you know, right there in the middle of Main Street, just a small window for vehicles to pass, I think that that would save so many accidents and so many, you know, or, or potential accidents. Because I know that the second that there's something that, that, that you can go ahead and make that left-hand turn, you're trying to go and then here comes this person who was just taking a picture and they step right out in front of you and you'd have to stop. If even they just had to just one second or two second little light that would just pop on so two or three cars could move through on just two or three of our streets, I think that we could also really improve the safety right there. And whether that's in this letter, like I said, I really agree with McCandless that if we were to put this in and then maybe come up with a second letter as well, I think that it might be, it might just.
If it's second left, that's okay. But.
Commissioner McGann.
I want to honor Jacque for his effort and his work to create this letter. I think this could have been added prior to our meeting. Plus, I think it's more powerful to separate it. I think it's a lot more powerful. They're going to, oh, we can do the crosswalks. But if you throw in stop, you know, those turn signals, they're going to go, oh, that's, we have to do a study, we have to see this, we have to do that. And then they're going to lump it in with the side, the crosswalks and the crosswalks are going to happen in a timely fashion as if we asked for the crosswalks and then we asked for the letters. Otherwise, I'm afraid they're going to be thrown in together. They're going to see that we have asked for them together and they're going, you know, they're going to want to give them to us together. And I think we're going to slow down the process of getting visible crosswalks if we throw in the left-hand turn signals. I'm totally for a letter like that. But I think that we will be watering down and possibly delaying the painting and the improvement of this crosswalks if we add another item.
Commissioner McCurdy.
If I'm able to amend my motion, I'm more than okay with two letters. Yeah, I don't, I, I agree. I don't want to water it down and I really want crosswalk painted.
Yeah, I'm not gonna have that.
Not, in a step, after a study. How do I do that?
Some substantive motion that you seconded.
It's like I said, it's, it's not a big deal to me. I really commend Jacque for getting the letter started. I think that they're both things that we need to get done. And I don't know if it's better to, like I said, to go in and say, hey, we'd like to see these two things happen. And maybe they say, well, we're definitely not going to do this one, but this one's easy. Or if they're going to say, well, we, we're going to lump it together. Either which way, I'm fine with it, but I agree that they're both. I think that they're both.
Your motion, Commissioner.
My amended motion or my original motion?
Just say you're, you're amending.
My substitute.
You're amending, you're reaching.
Let's do substitute.
We'll get a substitute someday.
Here, where are we at here? I move to approve the letter as written from Jacque.
I move to approve the letter of support for, to UDOT for enhanced visibility crosswalks along Highway 191.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner McCurdy, seconded by Commissioner. Substitute motion, thank you, by, seconded by Commissioner McCur-
Martinez?
Martinez, sorry. Yes, Commissioner.
In discussion, I'd like to direct staff, if you could write a letter with Commissioner Hadler.
We got it.
The next round or left-hand turn signal.
We can do that.
I think that's better for us. And sorry, I didn't call you in advance. I meant, it's phenomenal to do as well, it didn't happen.
It's a great idea.
So right, so. No further discussion necessary. All those in favor of Commissioner Adler's letter. Motion passes unanimously seven to zero.
So you've got some seven zeros, Jacque.
Oh, I know. We are on to
The water boils.
The discussion item of TRT Non-Promotional Funding Gap.
All right.
Commissioner Martinez.
Yeah, so this kind of came right from the TRT workshop that we held, was that? Can't remember which date that was. Earlier in the past, something like that, same thing. Yep, last Tuesday. Either which way, so one of the things that really came out of it besides bill and how things were going to work was kind of where we're going to be sitting at. I had originally taken some of Gabe's numbers and these were the numbers that I included. Looks like we're going to be stuck with, if, if this was at a full year from the original numbers, we would have a funding gap of 1.25 million right there for essential services. And those services would include law enforcement, solid waste, search and rescue, the museum, recreation SSD and GCAT. Right there. So these are some of the things that we're looking at on how we're going to make all of this work. Gabe has gone through and he provided a new, an updated projection with the effective rate of 4.5 starting on October 1st. And so what we're looking at right here is we're looking at a shortfall of those same services of small, 877,000 right there. And so that is for this year alone. If we were to take that onto the full year scale, we'll be looking at a deficit once again in 2026 of that 1.2. So if you imagine Gabe's, and, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Gabe, but your projection is more of a half year, right? Kind of projection as the other, the first, original projection right there would be a full year's projection. So I just kind of wanted to bring this up to the commission right here. And hopefully we can have some discussions on where we're going to go at the budget workshop.
Commissioner Hadler.
We also have, by my count, roughly 1 million, 135,000 dollars of unbudgeted expenses that we've already approved this year as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have one question, Gabe, and we discussed the other day about updating that sheet that originally you put out. Would that be something that we'll be able to see?
Yeah, that I'm going to be working on that tomorrow and trying to get that fleshed out and you know, hopefully run some drafts, you know, and, and by the end of this week in anticipation of the workshop, I think that that would kind of form the basis of a workshop to really get a detailed overview of all of the, the running expenses and the, and the gaps that we're looking at.
And then I know that Commissioner Martinez has been pretty involved in this. I'm wondering if maybe the three of us could put together agenda of some sort for that workshop, just I'm sure that it's going to divert well off of topic possibly, but if we could maybe come up with something that
Yeah.
we kind of all agree on to get through at that workshop with that being fine coming out of this discussion. Does anybody else have any thoughts on that? But that's kind of where I see that we are. I mean, Gabe did put out a rough sheet that I looked at a little bit and it, it wasn't complete enough that we could really put it out to the commission. And I think if we got that finalized, why then it's something that that next meeting, the public would have access to and that we would and we can kind of lead our discussion there.
Absolutely. And then just one more request, would it, do you think we could flesh out exactly where we're sitting on all of our reserve accounts? I think that'll help kind of decisions as well. So if we have that final answer of where we are with all of our reserves, we can figure out how we're going to be able to possibly move things around. Yep, that's, that's, there's already spaces for that in the current draft. So thank you for that. That's all that I have. Anybody else? Commissioner Hadler.
I, I also just wanted to point out that, that part of the reason we're here is because of HB 456 with some here have lauded as a a great bill, but that cuts down our, our flexibility and expenditure greatly. It's, it's probably going to cost us upwards of a million dollars in, in spend and it also means that we're going to have about $4 million of strict promotion without any flexibility that we're going to be spending, spending on, on, on promoting Grand County. So I think that's an important part of the conversation, or at least maybe not an important part of the conversation, but it's an important thing for the people in Grand County to realize.
This was
Commissioner McGann.
That a lot of this was not on how we budgeted or what we did in the past, but because of the changes of law and the change that is there. And
yeah. And I was worried about that bill from the other beginning.
Commissioner McCurdy.
In those reserves and almost talked about, about listing totals, I'd like to know corresponding totals that also match up with there's certain amount of totals that match up with allowable uses. I'd like to know the difference between at this date, we had this much money that was allowed for these uses at this date at this allowable uses. I'd like those delineations in that.
That's a good idea.
Well, I think I promise he's worked on that a little bit.
I promise you, I've tried to do that several times.
It is, it's complicated. I mean, the dates changed and we have some more dates changing moving forward.
And what, yeah, and what follows.
I'll try again.
Of course, it's just on expectations, not on real numbers either. I mean, as, as Mary's pointed out, those reserves came into place in the last 10 years. And, you know, Gabe and I have talked about this, this idea of like, how much should you have in reserves, right? Like, I know I talked to Tess and she said, the hospital said they always try to have six months of operating funds, right? Like, how much did you have? And so I just want to make sure that we all understand that we don't want to just drain those reserves down because we can. You know, we really want to and understand there are hard times and we, we want to get through hard times and we want to do the best we can, but we also want to make sure that we have a rainy day fund for when you know, it hits the fan.
to make sure that we have a rainy day fund for when, you know, it hits the fan. And that's, you know, maybe what we're gonna have to do right now, but I think we also need to be very cognizant that that, that money goes very quickly. We spent a lot of money tonight, for example. I just, I just wanna keep saying that, like, let's, let's just be very, very careful. It took a long time to build that up.
And just for a little bit of clarity on that, just in the short time that I've been on this commission, I know over five million of those dollars came in from Black Tech funds through the efforts of the Utah counties during my tenure on their board there. So I, I know that it's been ongoing for years and years, but it's also some of those happened very recently. So I'm, I'm aware that we need to be careful with that money and I agree with you totally, but we also need to be cognizant that we have to make some hard choices and make some changes moving forward and that's gonna be very unpopular possibly. So let's see how we can make this work and move on. Commissioner Mc- Martinez.
Yeah, I mean, just, I think the main point is, is there's, there's a structural funding gap right here that, that we need to address.
Yep, understood.
And, um, and, and I agree with you, Trish, that we should not be going and spending all of our money, you know, all of our reserves. But what we really need is we need to understand what those reserves are, what they can be applied to. And I think that without that knowledge right now, it's like, and, and, and that's where we're sitting at. It's like going and looking at the, you know, jif, you know, scrolls right there and trying to figure it out without the Rosetta Stone. We read, really, it's a piece of information that we're gonna need to get be able to make these decisions.
Um, if there is nothing further, I would say let's adjourn this meeting. I would like to just end possibly on one note and that is that Tracy Tappett sent a text thanking us for the work for CJC. I know that Tracy, um, has been going through some extreme changes in her life over the years, and so that's the reason Heather was on for the presentation today rather than Tracy and she would have far preferred to have actually been here in person. But we appreciate the money and the help that she's given us in, um, AG's office and I just thank her personally. With that, I will adjourn the meeting.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure there's no confusion for folks, uh, the last item on the agenda is reconvening the Board of Equalization. We are not doing that because we already did that. So that's the last item on the agenda, but we're not gonna do that. So I just wanna make that clear for public record.
Yes, thank you. I should have mentioned that. So thank you, sir.